Police Department Academy Class, joining an institution that represents integrity and character.
It is the ability to put the needs of others above yours.
This graduation ceremony not only honors the graduates, but also reflects the department's ongoing dedication to public safety.
I was shiny shoes in 1959, and that's the last time we had 100,000 Part I crimes. Serious property crimes and violent crimes.
One of the most notable drops in crime has been in Watts, which has seen a 48% decrease in violent crime. Mayor Antonio Villarosa told the new officers that all residents, no matter their background, deserve respect.
They're hard-working people. They're decent people. Never forget that. Never forget that that's why you're there, to protect them.
To protect and serve, a time-honored code that now leads a new generation of LAPD officers. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week. The city's animal shelters have seen an increase in animals being dropped off over the last few years, but budget cuts haven't allowed for staffing to keep up. But now, there is a way that those shelters may be getting a helping hand. Here again is Cindy San Luis.
L.A. Animal Services proposed last month eliminating overnight staffing at the city's six municipal shelters due to budget problems. That would've left some 1,500 animals unattended in the wee hours of the night.
Dogs sometimes get in fights, and shelter workers are there to break them up and protect the dogs. People do drop-offs in the middle of the night of injured animals.
So councilmembers Paul Coetz and Richard Allercon brought forth an alternative to city council.
We came up with a better solution, which is just to recognize that the department is too underfunded and that we actually should add 16 animal care technicians, and that would enable the department to function properly.
In addition, we recently had passed with our managed hiring department, six additional ACTs. So the total count that we will have will be about 22 ACTs in our shelters very shortly.
The money comes in part from L.A. Animal Services itself, but the mayor's office will need to continue funding those positions into the next fiscal year.
To have this type of relief means a lot of good care and additional support for our animals that we just haven't been able to maintain due to our staffing shortages.
A shortage exacerbated by the fact that Animal Services has actually expanded its capacity.
Staffing is down 22%, but shelter space is up 167%. With the recent passing of this motion, animals like this one will continue to receive 24-hour care and have additional help.
But there is still much to be done. Animal Services officials say donated supplies and volunteers are always welcome. From the North Central Animal Services Center in Los Angeles, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
And as Cindy just mentioned, Animal Services continues to be committed to expanding its shelters despite budget constraints. And the latest is the new South L.A. Animal Services Shelter at Chesterfield Square. Anna Marcos takes us to the grand opening.
This is ground zero for homeless animals in Los Angeles.
South L.A.'s stray pets are a big problem. But today, Mayor Antonio Villarosa also gets to celebrate one of the solutions. The state-of-the-art South L.A. Animal Shelter at Chesterfield Square is the latest built with Prop F funds. It will replace South L.A.'s old animal shelter, and it's the largest in L.A.
This shelter will make sure that when a stray pit bull is found wandering in the middle of a busy street or when a box of kittens have been mercilessly left in a parking lot, they'll be able to find safety and comfort in the 258 kennels and two cat rooms of the South L.A. Animal Shelter.
We value animal lives. We think they're important. We think they're family members. And we're going to invest in making sure that we have a place to showcase them, a place that we can help them find new homes.
The shelter came in so under-budget that it will get a new annex, which will add more room yet.
I don't think there's one thing you can think about that's not here. Whether it's a comfort for the animals, whether there's heat, whether there's water, whether there's enough space for them. We opened up seven others over the last few years, but this one, like the mayor said and the councilman, is special. We benefited from all those lessons learned, including more cat rooms than in the previous facilities, extra cat nursing room, and enclosed temperature-controlled room for any bunny rabbits that might arrive here.
It may be a brand-new shelter, but business is already picking up. Plenty of potential buyers want to take a furry friend home.
I'm checking to see how tolerant he is by squeezing between his toes.
Looks like this pit bull might be on his way from homelessness to a loving home. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Animals adopted at L.A. Animal Shelters come with free spaying and neutering, vaccinations, a microchip, and a license. For more information, visit laanimalservices.com. Religious leaders in the valley recently hosted an interfaith prayer service to remember victims of the Holocaust over seven decades ago. Gil Reyes reports from Northridge.
A service at Temple Ramatziyon in Northridge to remember 6 million lives lost and the families left behind.
We've got to make sure that this important day is marked here historically throughout the world and that we celebrate those survivors that are still with us today.
L.A. City Councilmember Mitchell Englander is among the attendees on this Holocaust Remembrance Day, also known as Yom Hashoah. This annual spring observance recalls those who suffered atrocities at the hands of the Nazis during World War II.
The Jewish people are a small nation in number, but large in spirit. That spirit cannot be burned in the ovens. From the ashes of the Holocaust rose spiritual redemption and political rebirth.
This year's commemoration also marks the 70th anniversary of the Warsaw Ghetto Uprisings, the first large-scale revolt by Jews against the Nazis. The service recognizes not just the Jewish people, but all victims of bigotry and hate.
As the Reverend mentioned earlier this evening, we're all children of God regardless of how we express that belief.
What was billed as an interfaith prayer service here at the temple invited members from other denominations to attend, including Catholics from nearby Our Lady of Lourdes Church and Methodists from Northridge United Methodist Church. In Northridge, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Yom Hashoah is the second Holocaust Remembrance Day of the year. The first is International Holocaust Remembrance Day, which takes place in January. L.A. city leaders are moving forward in their mission to create a greener and more sustainable city. And now, the reopening of San Pedro's Terminal Island Treatment Plant puts it a step ahead in its earth-friendly goals. Here's Anna Marcos.
All those pink pipes are the sign of the city going green. In fact, it's going greener than ever before. The Terminal Island Treatment Plant purifies and recycles water for irrigation and other industrial uses. But after a recent upgrade, it has reopened. And instead of purifying 4 million gallons of water a day as before, it can now purify 6 million.
The goal is simple: Bring recycled water to Los Angeles. Recycled water is local, safe, and reliable supply that is helping us reduce our reliance on imported water.
This growing use of recycled water is one of the reasons L.A. now leads cities around the nation in the lowest per capita water consumption. And city leaders don't plan to stop there. In the works are plans for expanding the facility so it can recycle 10 million gallons of water a day.
Some of the other uses besides groundwater replenishment from this plant will be serving our harbor generating station for cooling water and also providing environmental water for Machado Lake. Today, we can say that recycled water is not only here to stay, but it's also here to grow.
As city leaders find more and more uses for recycled water, the pink pipes will only make L.A. greener yet. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The plant is part of the Harbor Water Recycling Project, which involves several agencies, including the Bureau of Sanitation, the LEDWP, and Los Angeles County. There is no shortage of things to do with the whole family here in the city as the recent inaugural Family Play Day event proved, and the focus was all about health and nutrition. Over 200 families came together for a day of fun and healthy play hosted by the Los Angeles Department of Recreation and Parks and several of its community partners.
The whole day really is to get parents, families out here, active, playing, having fun, learning about good nutrition. And it's just a day for them to just come out and enjoy the day.
Organizations like Playworks, which focuses on the importance of playtime for children, and Let's Move L.A., part of First Lady Michelle Obama's nationwide Let's Move campaign to fight childhood obesity, joined together to host the Free Family Play Day at Green Meadows Rec. Center on East 89th Street. And the day of fun had everything a family could want to keep everyone entertained on a Saturday afternoon. From game stations to sporting activities like jump roping and a bicycling course, to cooking classes for adults. Teachers from Los Angeles Unified School District also took part.
Right behind us, I mean, there's a great cooking lesson going on for instructors, for teachers, all that. You know, if you're outdoors, out on the play area, what you're going to see is out on the basketball court and some of the other play areas where there's different activity stations that the kids can actually go on, and they'll actually be learning in a more instructional way how to use their free time.
What we're really trying to do is increase those eating fruits and vegetables and physical activity in the home as well as in the school site. And we believe that that is just the foundation of health.
A foundation built on play, physical activity, eating right, and having fun. A lesson best learned outside the classroom, on the playground, where watching how it's done takes a backseat to working up a little healthy sweat. The million-dollar reward in the Dorner case could be on its way to being paid out. A health expo aimed at helping the uninsured and underinsured. And put down that cellphone, police are cracking down on distracted drivers. These stories and more in City Beat. The LAPD has released information on how to file paperwork to claim the million-dollar reward offered in the case of Christopher Dorner. The former LAPD cop turned killer died of a self-inflicted gunshot wound in a cabin after police tried unsuccessfully to chase him out by detonating smoke devices. On April 5th, the LAPD announced that individuals who want to file for the reward will have until Friday, April 19th, to fill out the proper paperwork. The form can be found at lapdonline.org. The county Department of Public Health and the city of Los Angeles, in conjunction with National Public Health Week, held the Free Health Expo at the El Pueblo Historical Monument earlier this month. The expo offered free HIV testing as well as dental screenings, just to name a few.
We're doing screenings for blood pressure, mammograms, vision, hearing, cholesterol, all the services that a lot of folks don't have access to.
There was also an onsite truck for those who wanted to donate blood. And a yoga demonstration was held to encourage more people to exercise and live an active life. As part of April's Distracted Driving Awareness Month campaign, the Los Angeles Police Department will be actively ticketing those texting or operating handheld cellphones while behind the wheel. Drivers breaking the law will be cited with no warnings. Last April, over 57,000 tickets were written statewide for texting and handheld cell use. Nationally, an estimated 3,331 people died in 2011 as a result of distracted driving. And something even those who are not behind the wheel can do to help cut down on distracted driving? Not calling or texting someone they know is driving at the time. Councilman Bill Rosendale has produced a video urging Angelenos to reject what he says is the costly relocation of the north runways at LAX. In a two-minute video produced by Channel 35, Rosendale interviews Dr. Arnold Barnett, a professor of statistics at MIT. Barnett conducted a safety study using data from NASA and satellite imagery of the LAX North Airfield and interviewed pilots and air traffic control to conclude that the current layout of the north runways is extremely safe. But Los Angeles World Airport officials say more room is needed on the north side of the airport for newer, larger commercial jets to land safely. Residents in Pacoima have a new outdoor space that offers more than just a playground. Yana Kay has more.
These kids are having a blast on this slide. The kids, along with their parents and other community members, are here to celebrate the grand opening of Amistad Park in Pacoima, a new spot where kids can be kids.
This park is actually for them. It's for them to, when they go on that playground, when they're there playing, it can be anything they want. They can be anywhere in the world. They can imagine and dream anything.
The opening of Amistad Park is part of the 50 Parks Initiative, a plan that will add more than 170 acres of new park space in densely populated areas. The goal is to reach into communities that don't have easy access to recreation areas and parks and...
Give them something that they can be proud of, something they can take care of, something that gives their kids an understanding of not only recreation, but also health.
The park, which is the 11th park to be opened under the initiative, features a variety of exercise equipment, drought-tolerant planting, and LED lighting to keep energy costs low. All of this is made possible by a public-private partnership between the Housing Department, the Los Angeles Parks Foundation, and an organization that focuses on the health and well-being of young children, First Five L.A.
It's this kind of partnership that really demonstrates that working together, we can create something meaningful. We can create something accessible.
Officials hope that something meaningful will be created in the form of exercise and a healthy lifestyle that will last for generations to come. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Over the past seven years, the Department of Recreation and Parks has added almost 660 acres of park space. And a popular facility in the city's 9th district is reopened again after some much-needed renovations. Cindy San Luis takes us to the Central Park Recreation Center.
We were closed down for about two and a half months during the process where the entire gym floor was taken up, a brand-new floor was put in, which is significantly better than the one that we had.
Local kids took to the newly renovated basketball court at Central Park Recreation Center at 1357 East 22nd Street.
They're having fun already, and it's a beautiful sight.
It feels better to your feet because now it has a cushion on it because the other one kind of felt hollow.
Parents are equally happy to see their kids back on the court. Several boys' and girls' basketball leagues call this court home. Other recreational groups use the space as well.
It's good for the kids. All the kids come here.
This is stage one of a project that is going to do so much for this facility and will make it so much better for you guys when you come to the center.
The gym looks fantastic. There's more renovations to come. This is a pretty old facility, so it needs to be upgraded.
Future improvement plans include new restrooms, repainting, new windows, and a playground area, which are scheduled to be completed by early May. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week. And in this week's list of things to do, the Alvin Ailey Dance Company returns to Los Angeles, the history of puppetry, and a photo exhibit focused on humanitarian efforts. The Darkroom Galleries presents the photography exhibit, Developing Change, featuring nonprofit organizations using photography to accomplish humanitarian goals. The exhibit runs from Saturday, April 20th, to Saturday, May 4th. Developing Change validates the power of photography and its ability to positively change lives by reflecting much more than an observed moment. These are some of the images from the exhibit. The organizations featured include the Afghan Box Camera Project from Afghanistan, Exposing Hope from San Francisco, and Photo Kids from Guatemala. Darkroom is located at 933 Chungking Road in Chinatown. For details, go to drkrm.com. The L.A. Public Library's L.A. in Focus Free Lecture Series puts the spotlight on how the Turnabout Puppet Theater, located on La Cienega, headed by a trio of puppeteers who happen to be gay, impacted early gay culture and the course of American puppetry. The lecture takes place on Saturday, April 20th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the L.A. Central Library. Speaking will be historian J. Eric Linkswiler with special guests, Tony Urbano, master puppeteer and former performer with Turnabout, and Alan Cook, founder and director of the International Puppetry Museum. The L.A. Central Library is located at 630 West 5th Street downtown. Go to lapl.org and click on the Calendar section for details. A staple at the Music Center since 1998, the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater will return to Los Angeles as part of Gloria Kaufman Presents Dance at the Music Center's 10th season anniversary. An homage to traditional modern dance techniques blended with the new, the Ailey Company will perform three different programs of mixed repertoire with classic Ailey works and contemporary masterworks of our time. You can catch a performance on Sunday, April 21st, from 2:00 to 4:30 p.m. but you can find the complete schedule at musiccenter.org. The Music Center is located at 135 North Grand Avenue downtown. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. A tradition that began decades ago as a way to bless farm animals who worked the land has evolved into one that showers blessings on the region's beloved pets. It looks like an exotic pet adoption fair or an open-air zoo, but it's actually the annual blessing of the animals at the historic Oviedo Street downtown. And Oviedo Street is where every year, prior to Easter, animal lovers bring their pets to receive a splash of holy water and a blessing, this year from Archbishop Jose Gomez. And yes, there was even a llama.
Everybody's so happy with their animals. And you see all kinds of animals, from a llama to a dog to a parrot to a snake. So you see a little bit of everything here.
I like to hang out with other animal lovers. And I was hoping that if my dog gets blessed, she won't be as naughty. She gets into the laundry bag, and she gets into the trash, and she pulls my slippers off my feet and hides them. And she's a joy, but she's very naughty.
The blessing of the animals has been held at Oviedo Street since 1930 and celebrates the animal world for all that they provide to humanity.
They used to provide us our food, our help on the farmland. But now, it's turned into both thanking the animals and to also bless our loved ones. I mean, they've become family now, and they provide us a lot of love and support.
It's very rare that I think that the church recognizes the animals and makes them a special part of everything, so I love it.
It's a day that's gone to the dogs, iguanas, and snakes. And it looks like their human companions couldn't be happier for it. It is believed the tradition traces back to Catholic Spain. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Paul Krieger. The DWP will soon begin an important project to complete replacement of one of our city's main sources of clean water. The project will begin on March 23rd and will last for about five weeks. I know how much this will affect our commute, but this project will give a safe and reliable water infrastructure for the next 100 years. Thank you.
You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning. It is Friday, April 19th, 2013. I want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the row?
Alcon Buscano, Englander Garcetti, Wizard Corretz, Corin Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosen, Alzine, Wesson, Timmer. Miss President, our quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Corretz moves, Buscano seconds, next.
Committator resolutions for approval.
Perry moves, Park seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. There is a request to continue items one A and B to May 21st.
Okay, without objection. Do we have any cards?
There are cards, but since both items are continued, you don't need to take the cards.
Okay, so then we'll do that. Let's go to the next section.
Items two and three are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Ms. Perry.
I'd like to call item two special, please. Item two.
Item two will hold at the request of Ms. Perry. Okay, let's vote on the other item. Let's open the row. Close the row, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next section.
Items four through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before us. Any cards?
Cards on items four, five, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, and 15.
Members specials? Members specials? Okay, let's hold those items. Mr. Zine.
Six.
Six for Mr. Zine.
And nine. Six, eight, nine.
Eight, nine's got cards, right?
Are there any more items to vote on, Madam Clerk?
Yes, items 10, 13, and 14.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the row. Close the row, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, let's go to the next section.
On the continuation agenda, item 16 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, so members specials? Buscano.
Item number 16 for Mr. Garcetti, please.
Okay, Mr. Zine?
I'm up on the next section, please.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's no item to vote on that section.
Just that item. Okay, let's go down to item 17.
Item clear.
Yes, item 17 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Without objection, the item is before us. Mr. Zine?
I'm still after that 19.
You're still waiting?
I'm at 19, yes, I wait.
On item 17, I believe there's an amending motion forthcoming.
Okay, I've been informed that we have to hold item 17. I guess there's an amendment circulating. Okay, what's next?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations, items called special, or if you wish to recess regularly, go into the special meeting.
Okay, Mr. Lavange.
Quick introduction from Rotary International with their vocational training program. Professionals from Japan, please rise and be welcomed by the Los Angeles City Council. Arigato!
Mr. Lavange.
This time I'd like to call on the President of the City Council, Mr. Herb Wesson, for a very special presentation where he's batting 1,000. Please have a hand for Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the members. Here, come on in. I guess I'm on a, what would you call it, a chihuahua run? I mean, we've had chihuahuas for the past, I think, three times. But anyway, this is Shakira. Shakira is 10 months old. She's ready to go. In fact, I think she had a little minor surgery yesterday, so she could leave today if somebody wanted her. Anyway, it's Pet Adoption Friday, and this is the pet. Mr. Corretz, if I don't get anybody to adopt Shakira, then I'm going to buy him and present her to you as a gift, because we have to keep our 1,100% adoption rate in place. Again, I will reemphasize that. We've been doing this for six, almost seven years. And where it relates to the dogs, we have a 100% adoption rate. Most of our animals are adopted by people that are here in the council chambers, or individuals that are up in their offices and watching this on television. We are in a very fierce competition with the County of Los Angeles, and I do not want them to break our streak. So if you're looking for love, you're looking for a companion animal. You're looking for somebody that's just going to be there with you. I highly recommend that you adopt Shakira. Is she going to get any bigger?
No, this is her full size. She's 10 months.
This is as big as she's going to get. Now, I adopted the last one. I cannot adopt this one. I mean, that I can't. But anyway, if you... We do the very best we can to get our animals adopted, but we can't keep these animals forever. So in a lot of respects, if you adopt Shakira, you probably saved her life. So let's please, you know, take care of our four-legged friends. She seems to have a great disposition. Oh, she's a sweetie. And she's looking for a home. So what I'm going to do, we will keep Shakira...
And she dances.
She dances?
Mm-hmm. That's how she got her name, Shakira.
Sergeant, move the chair so we can see her dance right there on the conference table.
Can she dance?
When she's feeling a little bit better, she might be a little tired from her surgery. But she normally does. She actually has quite a bit of energy, and that's how she got her name Shakira.
Because she dances. But she had surgery last night, and, you know, she's not up to snuff. But anyway, she's a darling, darling, little young dog looking for a home. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. And what number, if any of our viewers are looking right now? Should they call a phone number?
Yes, the phone number is 888-452-7381.
888?
Please call.
81.
81.
81, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Shakira. Very good. Thank you very much.
She's a cutie.
Mr. Paul Corretz, we have a special presentation. Mr. Paul Corretz.
Colleagues, today, we commemorate the 70th anniversary of the beginning of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising, when Jews en masse decided to fight back and not allow the Nazis to deport them to death camps. That magnificently brave and tragic effort is but part of what we contemplate now at this time of year, when we remind ourselves of the Shoah, the Holocaust, that monstrous and grotesque example of man's inhumanity to man. Just last week, I was privileged to attend the annual Yom HaShoah, Holocaust Remembrance Day commemoration, at the Museum of Tolerance. Each year, we take the opportunity in council to remember this terrible event in human history, and also the wonderful people who were victimized by it. And so we have invited the Museum of Tolerance to assist us with this remembrance. Of course, this is something that means a lot to me personally. My father was fortunate enough to escape the Nazis at the very end of 1939. I only know that because when I was going through his papers a few years ago, I discovered a chilling passport with the Nazi insignia on it and that date. He was able to get to Argentina, and then a few months later, and I'm not sure how, he wound up in this country and remained for the rest of his life. I really know nothing about his experiences, virtually nothing, because when he died in 1976, even though it was 30 years plus later, it was still much too fresh in his memory, and he never was able to speak about it, or his sister and other relatives who were not as fortunate as him and were not able to escape what was going on in Germany. Now, we are joined today by Elena Samuels, who's the Director for Museum Volunteer Services at the Museum of Tolerance. Her responsibilities include supervising the recruitment and training of volunteer museum guides and docents, and overseeing visitor service throughout the museum. Ms. Samuel supervises the Witness Truth Speakers Program, working with Holocaust survivors who share their personal testimony at the museum, so that stories that are harrowing but also inspiring will be remembered and shared, so that the phrase "never again" will continue to ring forth as history unfolds, and we attempt to guide the world from this kind of dreaded evil of genocidal terror in the future. I'm very pleased that we're also joined today in council by Mr. Morris Price, who'll be formally introduced by Ms. Samuel's. He's accompanied today by his wife Shirley. Mr. Price was born and raised in Poland, and through his fighting spirit, inner strength, and some luck as well, he was able to survive the Shoah. Today, we'll have a brief opportunity to hear part of his amazing story. Mr. Price and other surviving members of his family were fortunate enough to make it to the United States, where he married, raised a family, and made a name for himself. I'd now like to invite Elena Samuels to share some insights.
Thank you so much. The evils of yesterday, notably of Monday, are a constant reminder that the evils of the past are an ever-present threat for the future. The Simon Wiesenthal Center and Museum of Tolerance preserve the memory of the Holocaust and its terrible lessons in order to promote... and its terrible lessons, in order to promote respect for human dignity and social justice, as we build a more hopeful world. I am honored to represent the Simon Wiesenthal Center and its Museum of Tolerance in the City Council's commemoration of Yom HaShoah Holocaust Remembrance Day, and the 70th anniversary of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising. Thank you to Councilmember Paul Koretz for inviting us to participate today. Today, we honor the memory of those murdered, 6 million Jewish victims, 9 million non-Jewish victims. We honor the courage of the Holocaust survivors, and the goodness of the righteous Gentiles for their acts of humanity. We pay tribute to the bravery of the Jewish resistance fighters, who on April 19, 1943, under the leadership of Mordechai Anilovich, began the Warsaw Ghetto revolt, and fought off the Germans for one month. During the Holocaust, 1.5 million Jewish children were murdered by the Nazis and their collaborators. Anne Frank stands out as one of those children. She left the legacy of her words as a diary, that is the second-most-read book in the world, after the Bible. We hope that you will visit the Museum of Tolerance this summer, as we proudly open a new exhibit entitled Anne, that will reveal much more of her story. The Museum of Tolerance is celebrating its 20th anniversary, hosting over 5 million visitors. Over 200,000 adults have been trained in the museum's customized professional development programs. 1.5 million students have participated in the museum experience. They have become witnesses to history, applying those evil lessons to the contemporary challenges of prejudice and discrimination in our world today. At the Museum of Tolerance, every day is Holocaust Remembrance Day. Our survivors share their personal testimonies of resilience and hope through our Witness to Truth program. It is now my privilege to introduce one of our courageous Holocaust survivor speakers, Morris Price, and his lovely wife Shirley. Morris is a true witness to truth.
My name is Boris Price. About seven years ago, I started speaking at the Museum of Tolerance. When people visit the Museum of Tolerance, they can see the Holocaust exhibit, the Simon Wiesenthal exhibit, and many more exhibits. They then have the opportunity to hear survivors speak. That is what I do. I speak to middle and high school students, law enforcement groups, and individuals visiting the museum. They hear about how I was born in Poland, and what happened after Germany occupied Poland when I was 12. At 15, I was separated from my family. I was sent to a labor camp, to Krakow Ghetto, and then to Auschwitz. When we arrived in Auschwitz in open trucks, the oldest and the youngest were told to stay on the truck. My instinct told me that I was in the wrong place. When the guard wasn't looking my way, I was able to jump off the truck and join the others. I survived that day, while those on the trucks were sent to the gas chambers. From March 1943 to October 1944, I was in Auschwitz. In October 1944, I was sent by cattle car to the outskirts of Dachau concentration camp. It was until May 1945 that I was liberated by the American Army marching away from Dachau. While speaking to a high school group, a young student with tears in her eyes asked me if she could give me a hug. When people want to take pictures of me and shake my hand, these are the moments when I know they will remember my story, they will remember me, they will remember the Holocaust. When I speak to law enforcement groups, I know that what I said makes a difference. When an officer later asked me to speak at his school, where his children attend, as they were studying the Holocaust, or when a lieutenant at the Sheriff's Department thanks me, shakes my hand, and the next day delivers a challenge coin to the museum to give to me, the coin stands for honor, strength, courage, wisdom. These people will remember, they will remember the Holocaust. In Auschwitz, we had to watch public executions, and prisoners would say, "Don't forget us, remember us." Every time I speak at the Museum of Tolerance, I have the opportunity to make sure that no one forgets my story. My story brings out emotion in people. It gives them the living person, who does not tell the tragedy of the past, but can also show them the power of survival. I never gave up, even when I lost members of my family, even when I almost starved to death. When I had typhoid fever, I knew I wanted to live. I was the first one from my family to immigrate to the United States in 1949, to Nashville, Tennessee. My two sisters and a brother, who also survived, came to the United States the following year. In Nashville, I worked in a pawn shop as a watchmaker, refinishing watches. I applied for citizenship, and that was also during the Korean War. I was drafted in the United States Army. After being stateside for approximately six months, the company I was with was sent to Germany. It was a good feeling going back to Germany as an American soldier, as occupation. When, just a few years back, I was in a German concentration camp. I spent two years in the Army. In 1955, I moved to Culver City. In 1960, I met a beautiful girl, who in 1961, we became married. We've been married for 52 wonderful years. We have three children, who all went to college. Our oldest son is a radiologist. Our daughter is a school psychologist. And sadly, we lost our youngest son, of the age at 33 in 2001. He had a neurological condition. My story in my life shows how human spirit can survive. This is a lesson that everyone should hear. The Museum of Tolerance makes sure that that message is spread. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Koretz, we have, that's why, Bill, I'm gonna miss you, because Bill gave me the look, and I knew we weren't finished. So I'd like to call on Mr. Rosendahl.
I gave him the look, I don't know what the look is, but I gave him a look, yes. First, I want you to know that I'm wearing a blue yarmulke. And I got this one a couple, three days ago, from a bunch of kids, who were real positive and giggly. I like the color blue. I wear blue because blue means hope. You look up at the sky, and you have hope. And I liked your message. It's worth standing up for. No matter how bad something might sound, or how bad you might feel, or how bad your day is, try not to get so down that you're unable to cope with it. Try to fight. That is the message of it all. I went to Anna Frank's room, I sat in there, I read her memoirs. We can never, ever give up hope. And we've had lots of Holocausts, unfortunately. We have to remember the Armenian. That happened. We have to remember my people, the gay people. We still get holocasted. And of course, that bad Hitler took us in too, and did us in. So we're all connected, we're all family, and God bless you for going on this stump throughout the world, letting people know of the story of the Holocaust, and we will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Paul, and thank you to the museum. It's fitting here today that Mr. Krikorian, in a moment, will also be talking about the Armenian genocide, that we have two peoples that have suffered so greatly at the hands of sort of depravity that one could never imagine. And we're a pretty unique generation, that we're privileged enough to see living testament from both genocides. Our children, our children's children, will be at some point unable to say that they have known somebody who survived, but we will be able to tell your stories. We will be able to make sure that they know. And I also want to thank the museum, who I know, a few years back, reached out and made, there are students, Armenian students and others, who said, "Please include the Armenian genocide as part of the story there." And that was a very important thing, for the coming together of both communities, who have shared this tragedy. But it's not just tragedy, we always hear that this is the worst in humanity. But as you pointed out, it's so important, it also brought out the best in human beings. It brought out not just the stories of courage, like yours, Morris's, but those people who stepped forward. And the most important thing is not just "never again," but that moment when we see evil, what will we do? What will we do to act? And what will we do afterwards to make sure that the story is told? Because action isn't just at that moment, it's in the recognition of a country, of whether or not a genocide has still occurred, it's a recognition of making sure bullying on a, on a campus doesn't result in something else. That's how these things start. And so we appreciate you making this living, breathing testimony to make sure that we do act when we do see evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Englander, Mitchell Englander.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Paul, for bringing them forward, and, and thank you for sharing your story as well. We gotta continue to do that, particularly, as I learned recently, they said it's about, we're losing about 1,000 survivors a month, right now. And there won't be many, and when my kids grow up, to continue to hear the story, so it's really important. My daughter was baba mitzvahed last year, and on her own, taught herself Hebrew, actually, which, I had a hard time in Hebrew school, with tutors and everything else, so I applaud her. But what was amazing about it was her mitzvah project. She decided to do, do on her own, and she did a lot of research online, and she found an organization called Remember Us. And she did a research, and they, they paired her with an 11-year-old girl who, who died in the Holocaust, who is never able to have her own baba mitzvah. And so she did a lot of research about this little girl, and we went to Yad Vashem in Jerusalem, and, or in Israel, and when we came back, she continued to do research, and found some paperwork that this little girl's sister had filled out many, many years ago. And my daughter continued doing research all the way up into her baba mitzvah, and found the little girl's sister, who turned out to still be alive, and made it out of the Holocaust, barely made it out of the Holocaust. And she researched further, and found out she actually lived here in the United States. She researched further, and found out she lived here in Los Angeles. She tracked her down. It was one of the hardest phone calls for her to ever make, if you can imagine, a 13-year-old girl wanting to honor her baba mitzvah with another girl. And we, we met up with her several times, and had dinner with her. It was just an amazing experience. I, I learned a lot. I also didn't know that they made kosher pizza, by the way, so, which she ordered in to her home, and lives in the Miracle Mile area. And we spent a lot of time with her, with Vera, and learned a lot about her family, and so when my, my daughter was brought to, to the Bima, she, we, she actually had some pictures of her, that we had blown up, and she shared the Bima with, with this girl that, that didn't survive the Holocaust. And so for what it means to me, and, and just going through and growing up in the history for my family, which I, I won't get into, but I think it's remarkable now, and it's ironic, that as we celebrate, I think it's the 70th year now, just this year, now in Israel, the population is 6 million Jews in Israel. That's how many we lost in the Holocaust, 6 million Jews. And that's now the population of Israel. And so this is truly special, to celebrate the 70th year, and I thank you again for coming and sharing your story with us. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Zain?
Thank you. I want to also acknowledge, Paul, I've been to the Simon Wiesenthal Museum, and I've been to Israel to see, and you view those tragedies, tragedies that you lived through, and here in the United States, where you have the opportunity to speak openly and freely, and help educate the populations as to the tragedies. I was at Pam Pacific a couple Sundays ago, when we honored the victims of the Holocaust, and Mitchell Englander and I were at a temple in Northridge, to recognize, where they brought all clergy together, to recognize and to show that we can't forget. And I see the Armenian population here, the Holocaust, the genocide, the tragedy that occurred to so many people. And you're a legend, and very important to, as you say, instruct law enforcement officers, instruct the people, the children, because if we let it wash away, it could happen again, and the comment "never again" needs to be heard loud and clear. So I acknowledge, commend you, and having been to Israel and seen it, and having been to the Holocaust Museum, and Simon Wiesenthal, and all the wonderful work this has done to educate the people, so we can't have that happen again. And as we acknowledge, and as we listen to your comments, and what you've lived, the tragedy we've lived, we know what's happening in Boston right now, with terrorism that's taking place here in the land of America, which we never saw that happening until it's now a part of what we have to live with. So the tragedy that you lived, God bless you, continue telling the story, continue informing people. But there's a great connection between the Holocaust and the genocide that has happened. Human beings, harming human beings, can't be tolerated in our, in our world, our planet. So God bless you, and continue many, many good prosperous years. Thank you.
Mr. Tom Labanche.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. Koretz, who continually reminds us of events that are so important, and the special guests, and when you recite your, your experiences, and how the student wanted to hug you and shake your hand, and all of that, it's just special. And I know we have other special guests who are here for another period of time. There was dark time in the world, but out of darkness comes light, and out of the very dark period of Germany, we hope comes light, and never forget the Holocaust, just like the Museum of Tolerance, the Museum of the Holocaust in Pam Pacific Park, which has a monument that really is, in such a peaceful, design way, expresses the loss that we should never forget. So, Mr. Koretz, I really thank you, and our special guests, I thank you, and remember all the tragedies that have, that people said it never happened again. Thank you.
Mr. Richard Alakon.
Thank you so much for this presentation, Mr. Koretz. Again, we, we have to remind ourselves of, of history. I wanted to share with you that about 10 or 12 years ago, I visited Israel, and had the opportunity, as well as Mr. Englander, to visit Yad Vashem, and went with a delegation from the state legislature. In fact, then-Speaker Vioregosa was heading up that delegation. But when we went to Yad Vashem, I was asked to place a wreath at the memorial service, the annual memorial service. And I have to tell you, I've, I've always felt there was a, a special connection, because ironically, and the delegation didn't know this, and the people who asked me to present the memorial didn't know this, but it was the anniversary of my own son's death. So I had a particular connection to the children of Israel who were lost in, in the Holocaust. And so I'm, I'm so pleased to see that the, the, the inspiration that is derived from such a negative reality will continue to inspire us to do better. will continue to inspire us to do better. And particularly in these days where we just recently saw terrorists act in our own country, that we have to remain vigilant against the violence that still exists in our communities. Thank you so much for being here. We respect you and we honor you as a tribute to our commitment to peace. Thank you.
Mr. Keretz.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of my colleagues for their comments. And I want to recognize Morris and Elena and give you certificates for your presentation. And also, this is a unique-- a unique opportunity because I'm not aware in recent years of any circumstances where survivors of the Armenian Holocaust and the Second Holocaust have actually been in one place at the same time. So this is a truly remarkable and unique circumstance. And I think-- I thank you, Mr. Keretz, in advance for your presentation and recognition of this as well. I think we should be sure when this is done that we get some photographs of the two together because this is a historic event that may never be repeated. And it's certainly something that we all want to remember and need to remember. So thank you all, colleagues, for your participation in this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's give him another round of applause. You surely deserve it. Now, as Mr. Keretz moves from the center aisle, I'd like to call on Mr. Kerkorian for the last presentation of the day. Joined by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's, as Mr. Keretz alluded, it's a poignant and historic moment for us to be presenting these two presentations today. And especially on the 70th anniversary of the Warsaw uprising, a time when such great courage was demonstrated by those who might otherwise have surrendered to oppression in the Warsaw ghetto. And it's especially poignant because many of those activists who rose up in Warsaw and fought off the Nazis were inspired by having read Forty Days of Musadag by Franz Werfel, which-- a book that was circulating throughout Warsaw at that time. The story of resistance by Armenians who stood up against their Turkish oppressors during the genocide. And so, again, we see this incredible historic linkage of both courageousness and resistance, but also the result that happens when these horrors, these crimes against humanity, do not result in justice and appropriate acknowledgement. And as we were discussing earlier, the magnitude of the Holocaust and all of its horror, so too, we, every year, come here before council and talk about the Armenian genocide and its enormous impact on the Armenian people. And it's often difficult to even be able to grasp the magnitude of such a horror. When we talk about numbers like that, a million and a half children, 6 million Jews, as Mr. Englander said, the entire population of Israel having been lost in the Holocaust, the equivalent of that number. And likewise, when we talk about 1.5 million Armenian men, women, and children in a tiny country, to have lost a million and a half people to this unbelievable terror, it's very, very difficult for most of us to even grasp what that means. And so I like to think in terms that we can grasp a little bit easier. And I'd like to ask you to remember how we felt the day of September 11th, when our country lost thousands of innocent victims to this horrible act of terror. Remember that feeling that you had in your gut. Now imagine if we experienced that same terror every day for an entire year. Every single day, again and again and again and again, for a full year. And you have a sense of the magnitude of what the Armenian genocide was, that degree of loss. But even with that, it's difficult to comprehend until you bring it to a very personal level. For me, when I think about 9/11, I, of course, think of the images that we saw of the towers being lost and all of the numbers that we heard. But what sticks with me more than anything else are those pictures that popped up on the walls around New York of individuals, the father that was still missing, the child whose parents still held out hope might have survived. Those individual stories are what bring reality to these horrors. And so today, instead of talking about the history of the genocide, as we have very often, I'd like to tell you one story about one person. And her name is Rose Gargian. And in 1908, Rose Gargian was born in an Armenian town called Kilis, which is now in Turkey. Kilis was a town known for its special kind of kebab. It was known throughout the region for having, you know, such good kebab. And when Rose was born and growing up, this was a quiet town where people knew each other and children played out in the street. And her dad was a shoemaker, a shoemaker who had Turkish friends. And one of those friends was the mayor of Kilis. I don't know whether Rose's father actually made shoes for the mayor, but they were friends. And so in 1915, in July of 1915, when the order came down that all of the Armenians of Kilis would be deported and sent into the desert for the long march to Derzor, where they would die in the sands of the desert. When that order came down, the mayor of Kilis told Rose's family, "You need to leave." And through his offices, Rose's family was able to escape from Kilis, was able to make their way through the deserts of Lebanon and Syria and finally, eventually, make her way to the United States. And Rose, through a long route, ended up coming here to the United States. She married her husband, Robert, and spent over 60 years of happy marriage with him. They were married in 1927 and in 1928 gave birth to their first child, Ellen. Later gave birth to a second daughter, Mary. And eventually had six grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren and two great-great-grandchildren. And that little girl, that little girl who left Kilis, that little girl who had a chance at life when so many of her friends would perish, that little girl is before you today, standing next to me. Rose Gargian, a survivor of the Armenian genocide. And we couldn't be more delighted to have Rose here. And I'll tell you a bit more about her story in a moment. But Rose's presence here, just like Mr. Price's presence here today, is a reminder to all of us of how important it is that we appropriately acknowledge genocide and humanities, inhumanity, to humanity and hold people accountable in every time we have the opportunity. Because here's the other irony about Rose's departure from Kilis. Kilis today is an entirely Turkish town. There is no Armenian presence in Kilis. The churches have been desecrated. The population has been removed. And the complete ethnic cleansing of the province has been completed. So just a month ago, there was a government-mandated conference that took place in Kilis for teachers. And one teacher who was there, a Turkish teacher by the name of Julia Akpinar, spoke up at this seminar and just raised their hand with a question and said, "Well, if the Armenian genocide is recognized, does Turkey have a comprehensive policy in response?" That was the question. And for asking that question, teacher Julia Akpinar was placed under arrest by Turkish authorities because of the mere mention of the phrase "Armenian genocide." And so that happened, colleagues, last month in Rose's hometown. So if there's any better reminder of the need for vigilance, it's hard to imagine what reminder-- what more reminder we could all have. So before we go to our other presentations, I do want to extend an opportunity to our colleague, Councilmember Garcetti, to say a few words. Of course, long before I was a member of this council, Councilmember Garcetti stood up here at this podium recognizing the Armenian genocide and has long been such a standout representative of Little Armenia and has been such-- played such an important role for our community. So I'm very pleased to turn over the mic to Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Kerkorian. And thank you for the pride with which you too, as the descendant of many who survived and many who didn't, represent the community, the Armenian community so well here and the entire community. This is a powerful day. Two survivors, living testament of the truth, living testament of the human spirit. And to have Rose here, we know each year, these days are getting thinner and thinner in terms of those who are still among us from the Armenian genocide. And today, we have always said, whenever we hear a lie, we will repeat a truth. In these chambers-- I'm so proud of these chambers-- for many years, as council president and as a council member, representing Little Armenia as well, to have made sure that we speak the truth here over and over and inspire our colleagues at other levels of government to do the same. The state of California's always been wonderful. Our representatives to Congress from here have been wonderful, but it's time also for our national government to join us. But I've visited Yerevan, the outskirts of-- and the outskirts cities of Armenia. I distinctly remember visiting the Titer Nakapet, which is the symbolic genocide memorial, just as I've done as well in Israel. It was a somber reminder. You look at the eternal flame that is lit there that recognizes an incomprehensible number, one that the human mind cannot wrap our heads around. So we tell a story at a time because we're incapable-- our brains are incapable of understanding really the depth of each story. And I'm proud to represent a city which has done a marvelous job of making sure that we speak truth to power. To stand in the presence of this survivor today, for Rose to be with us, to be making sure that we, as we bring the entire diaspora that has come to Los Angeles from so many different corners of what is known as Turkey, from Lebanon, from Iran, from Armenia itself, when you see that story, it is something that for all of us, reminds us not only that the testament of her strength, but any human being to make it to 105 years old, which she will turn on May 1st. And the Ararat Home is incredible. And I want to take a moment to commend the Ararat Home, which was founded in 1949. The Ararat Home has worked to ensure that the elderly members of the Armenian community have access to assisted living and nursing convalescent care facility that provides seniors with the care that they need while meeting their cultural needs. And I know that our final honoree today is the Armenian General Benevolent Union, the AGBU Generation Next program. The Generation Next mentorship program was created by volunteers from the AGBU and the Glendale Unified School District. Primary goal of the Generation Next mentorship program is to assist Southern California youth of Armenian descent by providing them with positive role models, guidance, and support. And this program has helped hundreds of young Armenians in the Los Angeles region and mirrors so many youth programs that other Armenian organizations from the ANC and Hometet Men and others have as well. But last but not least, congratulations to the honorees today because instead of making this a somber remembrance, we honor the human spirit. We honor those who are with us and we honor those who are willing to speak up and to speak out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to-- before we get to the Ararat Home, I just want to make mention of the fact that this example that I raised of Kilis and the denial that's going on, this is not an unusual example. This is what we deal with year in and year out every time April rolls around and we have these annual recognitions of the genocide. We see denial of the genocide throughout the breadth of our country, in every state capital, of course, in the national capital and in city halls like this. We see the presence of denial. And I just want to make mention and acknowledgement and thank the Armenian National Committee of America, who's represented today by Teresa Yerimyan, of America, who is represented today by Teresa Yerimyan, who has for many, many years been the most prominent, most important grassroots advocacy organization for our community and has continued to fight the fight for Armenian, appropriate Armenian genocide recognition. And so Teresa, thank you very much for being with us today as well. So it has become our tradition here, as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, not just to make this a somber moment, but also to recognize those who manifest the human spirit and have fought to preserve the Armenian culture in the face of great adversity over the last nearly a century now since the genocide. And as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, we are delighted to have Rose Gardian here and doing so well at the age of almost 105. She will be turning 105 in May. She, and that’s 105 years old. And one of the, one of the reasons she is doing so well and is, and looks so terrific here is because of the care that she’s getting right now in the Ararat Home of Los Angeles. And the Ararat Home is a, it’s been one of the most important Armenian, Armenian-American institutions precisely because it provides a place of refuge and care for the elderly Armenian community and has been the home to many, many Armenian genocide survivors and their descendants for over six decades now. There is a campus in Mr. Alakon’s district, in Mission Hills, also in Eagle Rock and Mr. Wizar’s district. The Ararat Home was named in March of 2013, one of the best nursing homes in America by the U.S. World and U.S. World and News Report. And it’s special because it provides our elderly not only with care, but also the opportunity to be together in a familiar environment of tradition and culture and heritage. And so in that respect, it has played an important role in preserving the Armenian culture throughout its history. And so with that, I’d like to recognize the chairman of the board of the Ararat Home, Joseph Kynemian, who is here with us. Joseph?
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Eric, council president, council members. I am wearing blue too, so for hope.
Yes, yes.
Every April 24th, Armenians worldwide commemorate the anniversary of the atrocities of 1915. And this year, it’s the 98th anniversary. And the most fitting example that Armenians, and Jews, by the way, are resurrected nation is Ms. Rose Gardian, 105 years old. So the perpetrators did not succeed in their plans, and genocides should never occur to any nation, to any people in the world. That’s the message that we should present to the worldwide nations. And today, I’m glad that we have with me a fellow board member, Peter Diracian, a board of trustees of Ararat Home, and the administrator of the assisted living where Ms. Gardian resides, Rita Noravian. And I would like Nora, Rita, to give, to say a few words. And I would like to thank Councilmember Paul Kokorian for presenting the resolutions for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul Kokorian, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Ararat Home, first, I want to say thank you for having us here. And on behalf of the Ararat Home and the Gardian family, I’d like to thank the City Council for presenting Ms. Gardian with the resolution and a nice commendment that we already, commendation, rather, that we already received. Ms. Gardian has been at the Ararat Home assisted living for the past nine years. I know she’s on wheelchair, but she very well walks with a walker. She always comes down in the morning for her breakfast and their lunch and dinner. She participates in all activities. She’s a very loving and warm-hearted and a generous woman, truly a very remarkable woman. Most of our residents are genocide survivor children, and each one of them has, you know, story to say about the sufferings and about the tragic past of their, you know, mom and dad. But one thing that wasn’t crushed was their spirit. They always say that their spirit wasn’t, never destroyed for the love of the God, for the love for God and for their own people. At Ararat Home, the management and the staff are truly considerate to the needs of our residents. Our dedicated staff work as a wonderful team to make sure that our residents get the respect, love, and the care they do so very much need and deserve. Ararat Home is truly a place of life, love, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, finally, to sort of, I guess, come full circle from 105-year-old Ms. Gardian and the Ararat Home to the youth of the Armenian community. Like many diasporic communities that have been scattered around the world and lost the linkage to their heritage and their culture, many Armenian youth here in Los Angeles are at risk and face many challenges like so many of our other youth. And in 1997, I and a number of other people who were active in the Armenian General Benevolent Union, the largest philanthropic Armenian organization in the world, decided that it was time to have a mentorship program to help some of these youth who are at risk of falling through the cracks, falling into gang life, being exposed to drugs and other things. And that mentorship program has been going on since 1997 and has made a dramatic difference in young people throughout Southern California. It’s modeled after the top mentoring programs in the nation, and the AGBU Generation Next program has now grown from those humble beginnings when I was involved with it, and by the way, where I met my beautiful wife, Tamara, in my activism for Generation Next. From those beginnings, it’s gone on, working with eight mentees to start with in Glendale High Schools. It’s gone on to serve hundreds of students from 7th to 12th grades under a professionally managed environment. And it’s absolutely free, helps prepare teens for the rigors of tomorrow, and ensures that they will become the successful future members of the Armenian-American culture and community here in Los Angeles. So I’m very pleased to be joined by representatives of the Armenian General Benevolent Union Generation Next program today, and I’d like to turn the microphone over to Hagop Jasmadayan. Hagop?
Thank you. Today with me are Yasmin Alpe, who is the Western Director of the AGBU, Maeda Chaprazian, who is our treasurer of Gen Next, and Alfred Bedrosian, who is the director of the program today. Oops. The volunteer staff and mentors and mentees of the Armenian General Benevolent Union Generation Next Mentorship Program would like to thank you for your recognition of our program and thank Mr. Councilman Kokorian for this opportunity and also for founding the, helping fund the program. The volunteers, mentors, and staff of the Gen Next take it upon themselves to help the youth of our heritage who might be in need of some direction and help to shape their futures in order for them to become successful members and productive citizens of these United States, our adopted homeland that has generously opened its doors and provided us with the freedom and opportunities afforded to its citizens. Our program matches each of our mentees with a mentor who is a successful member of our community that acts like a big brother or sister in helping the youth that may need some help adjusting to their new surroundings or in need of some help in directing their lives. The program also holds at least monthly group meetings to cover common themes, like we visit colleges, museums, we teach them how to take care of themselves nutritionally, physically, and expose them to lectures and other community activities. As we approach the 90th anniversary of the first genocide of the 20th century and as descendants of the survivors of this genocide, we also strive to instill in our mentees the pride of their Armenian heritage and to ensure that they never forget what happened to their ancestors. We also like to think that we are instilling in our mentees the call to duty to continue the struggle to ensure that our federal government of this great nation of ours realizes that the price, over time, of not recognizing and accepting the historical truth of the genocide far outweighs the cost of recognizing it. We thank you again for this recognition and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, thank you very much for your kind attention. Mr. President?
Councilman Kokorian, we do have several members on the queue. I’d like to recognize Councilman Rosendahl, Councilman Alakon, and Councilman Zain to begin. Councilman Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the young and the old. We start off at the one end and we end up at the other end. Don’t I know it? Don’t I know it? I’m wearing my yarmulke still because it’s the same blue hope that we all have among us here in the room. We’re all connected, we’re all family. All the genocides of this century and the last century, and since humanity was created, should never, ever happen again. I’m still fighting for my basic civil and human rights as a gay man in many places on this planet. They still liquidate us. We’re trash. Oh, no. We’ll never forget, we’ll never forget all the Holocausts where we’ve been grabbed up and thrown in as well. But I am so proud of you, and I’m going to tell you, you’re going to get the big eggs. I was trying to figure out who gets the turkey egg and who gets some of the blue eggs. You’re getting a half a dozen eggs. Take it to the nursing home, make sure she gets to eat it and that she’s able to say to me, these have helped. And I’ve asked Dennis Zain to be my water boy here and carry these and bring it over so that the Holocaust people from the 45 one can also be nourished. So Dennis is going to come with me as I come over here. Without my walker, I might add, though I have one nearby.
As Councilman Rosendahl makes his way. Councilman Alakon?
I can’t top eggs.
All you can do is try, councilmember.
Not even, not even. Councilmembers, I don’t have any eggs to present to Rose, but I do want to, Commander, she is, she is probably, she’s definitely one of my oldest constituents, if not the oldest constituent, of the 7th Council District. But I do want to speak to the Ararat Home, which is a tremendous jewel in the 7th Council District that a lot of people don’t know about. It is hidden behind the Holy Cross Hospital, Providence Holy Cross Hospital, but it provides services in such a beautiful way that provides so much respect to our seniors as they are getting on in life. I absolutely am confident that they are increasing the lifespan of those who have the benefit of participating in its programs. But I also want to say that their clients are very diverse. They’re not just Armenians, they’re a variety of representatives of our community. And so for that, I want to thank the Armenian community, the Board of Directors, for providing these quality services to all of our community. It does focus on the Armenian culture and, by the way, they have a wonderful banquet facility that I encourage all of you to seek out and use. It is one of the most beautiful facilities in the San Fernando Valley. And they also have a beautiful little church that, or chapel, that truly reflects their religious heritage as well. Rose, we’re so blessed to have her with us today, and again, I say it is a tribute to the services that are being provided by Ararat Home. Thank you so much for your persistence. I do want to say, ironically, you heard me mention that I presented the wreath at Yad Vashem. That was on May 1st, which is Rose’s birthday coming up, and it’s an interesting irony. I don’t know what it means, but I choose to believe that it means something. So God bless all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Zain, followed by Councilman Labans, then Councilman Kuretz.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. The Armenian community, very close to the Lebanese community. I’m very proud to be Lebanese. I meet many, many Armenians who say, “We grew up in Lebanon.” The connection is very strong. I see raising it behind Paul Kokorian. Thank you. But our colleague, Paul Kokorian, has really brought about that understanding of the genocide of the great Armenian community and my colleague, Eric Garcetti, Little Armenia on San Monica Boulevard, because of your hard work. But I look at us as people that try to help people. And whether it’s Armenian, or Jewish, or Latino, or African-American, in this country, we should have the freedoms to do what we wish to do. And coming all the way from Downey, California, Downey, California, to come here because there’s Armenians in Downey, California, but the fact of the matter is we’re human beings that should have those opportunities to have love, freedom, and opportunity. And that’s what I enjoy, that’s what the council enjoys, and that’s what we want to give to everyone. But I’ve been to the memorial, Montebello, where they have that annual memorial. I’ve been out there every single year to show support and show respect. I’ve been to many of the Armenian events. I know the ANC is really making headway when it comes to the political spectrum, just as the Jewish community has done with AIPAC. But that is how we hold our fabric of democracy together. And Rose, 105 years old, they have a radio station aimed after you. 105 is a LA radio station.
She needs to educate Dick Reardon, who’s going to be 83.
Well, Mr. Reardon will be 83 soon. But congratulations to you. But Rose, there is a radio station in Los Angeles named after you. It’s 105. It’s on the FM dial, named after you.
That’s great.
But Paul, thank you for bringing it forward. Eric Garcetti, thank you for bringing it forward. You’re a vibrant, wonderful community. But when I look at the Armenian people, I look at the Lebanese people, I look at the Middle Eastern people, they work together, they are living the American dream, as we all wish for everyone. So God bless you. Thank you. And Rose, may many of those birthdays continue, more and more and more. You are a legend, a legend here in the City of the Angels. You’re an angel amongst the angels. Thank you all very, very much.
Councilman Labans, followed by Councilman Kuretz.
I just want to correct Mr. Zain. Rose is an angel in the City of Angels. I don’t think you’re an angel, so count it out, Mr. Zain. But that all being said, I had to say that because I got to meet Rose coming into City Hall with this distinguished group, right out in the rotunda, which is very special, to know someone 105 years old and vibrant and loving and as an inspiration to a community. And Mr. Kokorian, again, as I said to Mr. Kuretz, that microphone is so important that you speak and bring people here who have a strife, a thought, a battle, a history, and a story to tell. So I just wanted to rise for everybody on this occasion. Behind you sat a traveling group from Japan, from the International Rotary. And as I went into the back, as Mr. Kuretz said, you made the statement as well, there’s a room where this, two groups have never been in the same room. And then I referenced our challenge during World War II and Manzanar and other places with the internment camps during World War II. We’re all sinners, except Rose. We’re all sinners in our world, in the challenges, but to then to correct our sins are so important, whatever they may be in the deepest way. So I thank you, Mr. Kokorian. This has been a good hour of time to hear, to listen, to reflect, and to be motivated to always remember and never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kuretz.
Well, first, I want to thank Mr. Kokorian and Mr. Garcetti for putting together this recognition of the first terrible genocide of the 20th century. And it’s my strong belief that mankind’s inadequate recognition and response of this genocide directly enabled the Holocaust to take place. There really is one big difference between the two genocides, and I think that difference is that in the case of the Holocaust, Holocaust deniers are a fringe group that nobody respects. The German government and the succeeding generations have recognized the terrible things that happened, and they make every possible effort to squash antisemitism and make sure that there is no chance that that will be repeated on German soil. The tragedy is that this has not happened with the Turkish government and the Turkish people. And I had the firsthand experience, as I think Mr. Kokorian knows, of having a professor that 35 years ago taught a class in Ottoman history, and at the very end of that, he taught that the Armenian genocide was a fiction. He taught what happened and then said it never happened. I’m mad 35 years later that someone like that tried to take advantage of young students that didn’t know the true story. I think we have to continue the fight to get recognition of what actually happened. Even though it’s 100 years later, there still has to be a message that you can’t engage in genocide and have no consequences. So if it happens 100 years later, 110 years later, at some point, hopefully in the near future, this has to be recognized, the Turkish government has to own up to it, and like the German government, make sure that it’s never repeated. So I thank you, Mr. Kokorian, for leading this fight locally, and I know you will, and I will join you in that for the years to come until we are successful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Kuretz. And, Mr. Kokorian, looks like you have a budding star in reaching for the microphone. I wonder how that happens.
Thank you. This, colleagues, this is just, here, sweetheart. No, no, don’t grab that, don’t grab that. Okay, let go, let go, let go. This is my daughter Lori, who will be turning, turning five in May, when Rose is turning 105. And Lori is here really because of Generation Next in many respects as well, because it was through Generation Next that I met my wife, Tamara, so.
Well, congratulations, Councilmember.
Thank you, colleagues, very much.
And thank you all for your beautiful presentation and your great message. She’s very articulate. All right. So I do believe that does conclude the presentations. Madam Clerk, what is in front of us?
Item two, called special by Councilmember Perry.
Councilwoman Perry, are we ready?
Mr. Chair, I have an additional motion I want to introduce on this matter. Can we just hold it on the desk till Mr. Kokorian has a chance to do what he’s going to do and then just put us back in the loop?
We’ll put that on, item on the desk. We’ll hold that.
Mr. President, you wish to take up item number six, called special by Councilwoman Zain at this time.
Yes, Councilwoman Zain, are you ready with item number six? Okay. Councilwoman Zain?
If we can have staff come up on this matter, item number six, it’s regarding billing, ambulance billing and the audit and the impact of AB 678, which hopefully will bring in additional funds to our LA City Fire Department. But as they’re taking photos, I think we’ll have to wait a second, Mr. President.
We’ll pause for a second as our presenters... No, no, it’s okay.
Do we have staff on item number 6?
Yes.
Staff here on 6, Controller's Office, Fire Department.
Were they made aware of your concerns?
Mr. Teefank, I know it's not you. If there's no one here from those offices, we need to put it on hold on table until someone can arrive.
Okay. We'll put that one on hold. You have two items on hold now. Can we have the staff of the CLA call down, the staff that has worked on this item, to answer Councilwoman Zine's questions? Does CLA call down the staff? We'd appreciate it. Or Councilwoman Zine's staff. Patrice, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 9, called special by Councilwoman Zine.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Item number 9. This is Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti, this is the Office of Immigrant Affairs, and that is up at this time. This is an item that Mr. Garcetti and I worked on. And, Mr. Garcetti, if you want to take the lead on it, it's an office that we're looking into establishing with the immigration reform coming forward from the federal government, how this will connect for the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you for your leadership. You've been a national leader on immigration. Actually, Mr. Zine chaired the National League of Cities Workforce or Task Force on Immigration, which is a bipartisan coalition that came together to do this. And on immigration, sorry, on issues related to immigration, Los Angeles has to lead. We have to be organized, we have to be responsive. We honor two incredible immigrants who are survivors of genocide here today, and they're just the tip of the iceberg of a city that has welcomed immigrants since the pobladores first established this town. Los Angeles is a crossroads, a home to thriving immigrant populations that come from Latin America, from Asia, from the Caribbean, from Africa, from Europe, from all across the globe, and they add vitality, creativity, and investment to our city. The legislation put forward today to relaunch the Office of Immigrant Affairs and to make it a one-stop shop to help Angelinos travel along the new federal pathway to citizenship will ensure that we can be at the front of the line. We've seen in other cities like New York this office established. We've seen it established here, and the Human Relations Commission has done an admirable job of keeping it alive as we've looked to strengthen and re-strengthen it and provide the resources necessary. You know, any new federal program is daunting and complex, especially for immigrants. And the new legislation, that I'm very optimistic will pass with bipartisan support at the federal level, will be just that, very complicated. And I came back from a trip to Washington, D.C. three weeks ago. I met in the White House with our domestic policy adviser in the Obama administration, Cecilia Munoz, who is the point person in the White House. I've been in constant contact with Senator Reed's office, his lead counsel, and today just chatted with Javier Becerra, who is point in the House Democratic Caucus. We have seen that this is going to be a moment for us to open a new chapter. And Los Angeles can only succeed when immigrants succeed. They will pay taxes, they will get college scholarships, they will have the same pathway. And for me, it's not just an abstract issue, it's a personal one. My grandfather Salvador came here without documents about 100 years ago in the Mexican Revolution, and for 30 years was not a citizen until he fought in World War II as a volunteer and came back from that war as a citizen. Los Angeles is home to millions of hard-working immigrants who pay taxes, own small businesses, earn college degrees. But unless we help them achieve legal status, they aren't realizing their full potential, they aren't contributing to Los Angeles in the way that we need. And the city isn't realizing its full benefits that they can provide to the economy and our civic life if we don't have this. When we help people become citizens, we help people access preventative care, which saves us money in the emergency room. When we help them become citizens, we ensure taxpayers are not stuck for the bill. We make sure that neighborhoods are safer because people know that they can report crimes to LAPD without fear. When we help people become citizens, we make sure babies get the nutrition they need to start their lives well. We must take action at the local level to make immigration reform real. It isn't just something that happens in Washington. It must happen on the streets of Los Angeles. And Los Angeles is, I think it's almost 63% of us are either immigrants or the children of immigrants in this city. And because of that, we have the most to gain. And so thank you to everybody who has come here to support the legislation. I just ask everybody who is here and support today of this to stand up for a moment, if you don't mind, to show your support. We've got folks who are here from the Asian and Latino and African and even European immigrant communities that are here to stand for what this country is about. And yes, Thai is covered in the Asian, but I'll say Thai as well because Chancey gets a special shout-out. Thank you, Tom, for that. But I urge all council members to support this. If we could have the CLA just come forward for a moment to speak a little bit to where the resources would come. Some people say, "How can you start a new program? How can we do this with existing resources?" And obviously, working closely with the mayor's office, we want to see this have the authority that can come from, help from the mayor's office directly as well. So I'll hand it over to our chief legislative analyst.
Well, again, you've got a report before you which discusses, I think, moving forward with a strategic plan on immigration services, discusses a number of areas. So I'm sorry, specifically, council member, your question?
Just on, tell us in the report what you've seen in some other cities, but also then how the funding for this can occur with existing resources.
Well, I'll let Felipe Chavez of my staff address what we've seen in some of the other cities. We do propose that the funding for this and the positions for this be included in the upcoming budget discussions. So we would work out the exact funding sources there. We don't necessarily anticipate it would mean additional funding. It's just a matter of allocation of resources. So I'll turn it over to Felipe to discuss some of the other cities that he's looked at.
Felipe Chavez with the CLA's office. Our office had an opportunity to have a conversation with a commissioner from the New York Office of Immigrant Affairs. Their office, basically, was established by a charter in 2001. It is staffed by, I believe, six full-time staff members and seven university fellows on a yearly basis. They offer extended services, including deferred action, expansion of immigration legal services, healthcare access. And they also offer a New York State Notary Public Bill, which they enforce. In a conversation with them, they indicated that there's other cities throughout the United States that also have Offices of Immigrant Affairs, and they're usually staffed by, from two to three people.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I was very pleased to second this. And as you mentioned, I did lead the national effort from the National League of Cities on immigration reform and testified before Congress on this matter when that matter was moving forward. And it looks like light's been, again, given to this particular subject of reform pathway to what many people wish in America, a pathway to become part of the fabric of this great country. So as Congress moves forward, and hopefully it'll reach the desk of the president, and we will finally end the hidden agenda and come forward and permit people from all over the world that are already here in the City of the Angels. I think the numbers estimated was 12 to 14 million people, that we find this pathway that they've been anxiously waiting for, for many, many years. And we in the City of Los Angeles need to be ready, since we have such a huge population in the city, of many immigrants from all over the world. So this is an effort to move forward, to accept the fact. Hopefully, Congress will do their job, the president will sign it, and then we can move forward and bring these people into the fold as they want this pathway to become ultimately citizens of the great United States of America. So, Mr. Garcetti, thank you. It was a pleasure working on this, and hopefully we'll see light for this particular that will affect so many millions of people here in Los Angeles. And thank you for the CLA's office that are working on this.
Ms. Perry.
Mr. Miller, this is a question regarding, I guess, logistics of implementing this Office of Immigrant Affairs. The Community Development Department, and I don't know where it will ultimately land or what it will be called, but is going through a transition as we move forward on this effort to consolidate activities that are focused on economic growth and development. And while many aspects of the immigration process ultimately may roll over into that, I'd like to see this implemented in a way that is accomplished in a reasonable amount of time. What is the contemplated implementation strategy? And is there any consideration of putting this in, for example, the Office of the Mayor versus the Community Development Department? What's your thinking on that?
Well, I think that's a discussion that you're going to be having along with the budget and the allocation of the positions. Traditionally, they are housed in offices of the mayor, and there was an Office of Immigration Affairs here in the city in the mayor's office. It could also be housed in, and again, the Economic Development Department structure contemplates many of the CDD functions being moved to housing. But again, I think that you're going to need to have the discussion about precisely what this function is going to be, and it may be much broader than a narrower focus of sort of economic development. So again, I think there are several options ultimately.
Other than a mayor's office or a development department, what are the other options?
Well, those would seem to be the primary, too. Again, in the discussion of the Economic Development Department and those former CDD functions, there was a thought given to establishing sort of a Department of Community Services. That was one of the options that were discussed. But ultimately, it was moved in the direction of moving a lot of those functions into the Housing Department instead. So that is something ultimately that you could revisit. But again, I think the options probably before you today would be the mayor's office or the Economic Development Department.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I want to thank you. I believe in 1880, Alexander Labange. And I think, and someone who I didn't even know, on the East Coast, distant relative said it really was Bonge, B-O-N-G-E. But immigration, instead of putting NY for New York stamped LA for Labange. But anyway, 1880, Alexander came here. 1895, Thomas Joseph Lernerhan, whom I'm named, came here from Ireland, was a Los Angeles police officer. All that is so important. There should be an office in this building that has welcomed and come and find the way. This is the public microphone. The City Hall is a place to help people. That is what it's all about. So I rise to support this. I don't know, we need a department, we need a place where people go to get the, all the resources necessary, Jerry, including the multiple resources, our community college, L.A. Unified, other government entities, the county do to help people, and also to learn the history of our region, which is so important. So, Mr. Garcetti, I thank you for this effort here as we move forward, and I cast and I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendorf.
Yes, we should thank everybody, frankly, for everything. Look, I stand up as a son of immigrants. My parents were immigrants. Our great nation was founded by immigrants. Unless you're an American Indian, everybody else came from everywhere else. And we can all be grateful that we came to America because America is where hope reigns. Look, we've been talking about immigration strategies and policies until the cows come home, till you're blue in the face. As my mother used to say, "Talk is cheap." Now, maybe by us creating this department, maybe by us focusing on immigration ourselves, we can help the federal government in its details where it's their responsibility to make the plan and make it work. We're the local level, we are the immigrant capital of the planet. We have 40% of our people weren't even born here. My parents weren't born here. Hey, it's time. So it's obviously a no-brainer, and we've got to thank Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Zine and everybody else, and you guys, because we need it, we need it yesterday, we need to set up details of how we make it work. And when we get to the Budget Committee, we can answer those questions. But thank you for your leadership, Mr. Zine, on this issue constantly. That's it. Let's move forward. Let's expedite this. The sooner the better we get it up and running, the happier I'll be. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I rise to support this, and I thank you for allowing this discussion to take place. One of the key factors, I believe, is accountability and protection of our citizens, our participants in our society who have been living in the shadows for all these years to now come out into the light. But when that does happen, my concern is this notion of accountability. When you look at the trends in the past, and serving my district for 12 years as a council member, as a deputy 10 years, I have seen inscrupulous characters take advantage of those who are not informed of the process. You see persons posing as attorneys, professionals who say they can help, and they take the money from the people, and the people do not know what to do. This issue of protection is going to be critical in this phase. As the federal government begins to understand its role and hopefully clear in its policies, we as a city, given 64%, either being immigrant or born of immigrant parents, will be coming across an environment that's going to be very abusive of those who do not understand the process. So is there a way to put forth an instruction that speaks to some level of protection, advocacy role in this future department or whatever, how it's going to be identified? Is there a way to make sure that's instilled so that we can have protection of our participants as this abuse is inevitable? Because there will be those who will be opportunistic and posing in a manner that is going to be, I think, threatening and abusive of our folks in our city. Is there a way to do that, Mr. Miller?
Well, I think probably the clearest way of doing that, regardless of where the office is ultimately housed, would be to establish it via ordinance. And again, it could be, like the grid program, that could be in the mayor's office, but established by ordinance. But again, I think in the discussions of the specific positions during the budget and the resources, the exact functions of this entity also needs to be discussed. And what you may want to do is codify that in an ordinance that establishes what the roles of this entity are.
In the past, when I've dealt with cases like this, we usually call in the Bunko Squad from LAPD. We speak to city attorney. We look for the advocates at the nonprofit sector that have some kind of expertise in how people can be protected. So to me, it would be similar to some type of a task force that could be added to this department that can be razor-sharp as to addressing the needs of these folks that will be abused by those who are inscrupulous characters that are out there and would take advantage of those that are not informed. Can we put it in that framework?
Absolutely. In fact, recommendations 5 and 6 of the report really go directly to what you're talking about, working with LAPD in terms of those sorts of protections, as well as the Human Relations Commission, and to better serve specifically vulnerable populations. If, again, as part of this process, ultimately, when it's established, you may want to set up a task force or an advisory body specifically related to this.
I can feel the council president saying, "About time, Councilmember." But I just want to say the last point. The more we promote affordable housing, the more we promote shuttle systems, transportation that allows for the transit-dependent to get to their work, the healthier our immigrant population will be. So, colleagues, it's upon us to promote those types of policies. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, at Mr. Garcetti's request, I will have the general public comment, and you will be given one minute each. Rudy Espinoza, it could be Hilda Mendez, Jared Sanchez, please come forward. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Rudy Espinoza. I have the pleasure of serving as a commissioner on the Human Relations Commission. I'm here to speak in support of the Office of Immigrant Affairs, and I'm asking for you to consider to place it in the mayor's office. An Office of Immigrant Affairs should be a top priority of the city. Los Angeles is an immigrant city, and we must mobilize our resources to ensure that our immigrants in our city have a home and a pathway to contribute to our communities. Indeed, a lot of them already do. They pay their taxes, they work hard, and a lot of them even own their own homes. We need to help them engage more in our city and contribute more. A lot of immigrants come to this country with a great level of skill and an entrepreneurial drive, and we need to create a pathway for them to start their own businesses and to use everything that they bring with them to this country. So with that, please, I want to sort of advocate for the Office of Immigrant Affairs, and please place it in the mayor's office where it will have a priority.
Thank you. Hilda Mendez, Jared Sanchez, is this Joseph Viola?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Hilda Mendez.
Good morning. My name is Hilda Mendez.
Soy miembro de CIU USWW.
I am a member of CIU, United Service Worker.
Estamos aquí, mis compañeros y yo, para aplaudir los esfuerzos del concejal Garcetti.
I am here with my coworkers to applaud the work of council member Garcetti.
Y del Consilio para reabrir esta oficina.
And the council in order to open this office.
Esta oficina es muy importante para toda la comunidad inmigrante en Los Angeles.
This office is going to be very important for all the immigrant community in Los Angeles.
Gracias a todos. Esta ayuda y apoyo brindará mucha información.
Thanks to all the council members. Thank you for your help and support. This office is going to provide a lot of information.
Para nosotros ahora y en el futuro.
For us, now and in the future.
De parte de CIU USWW, aplaudimos estos esfuerzos.
From CIU, SWW, we applaud your work.
Quiero agregar brevemente que también mi compromiso es informar a mi comunidad estos servicios.
I just want to add briefly that my commitment is to inform the community about these services.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hilda Mendez?
Yes.
I just had, what happened to, okay, Jared Sanchez?
Did Jared Sanchez come in?
Joseph Viola? And Santiago Rubio?
Hi, my name is Jared Sanchez. I'm a data analyst at the Center for the Study of Immigrant Integration at the University of Southern California. CLA approached us a couple weeks ago as they were putting together some initial findings and report for this new office. And as we were talking, we spoke about a new report that CSII is producing, will come out next month. It's regarding what is at stake in California for authorizing the undocumented, and the title for it is Getting Reform Right: Economic Benefits of Comprehensive Immigration Reform for California's Regions. And with this report, there's three broad objectives. The first one is to develop a novel methodology to identify the undocumented in California and in select regions at a county and sub-county level. The second is to quantify the economic benefits of authorization based on several policy scenarios. And the third objective for the report coming out in May next month is to disseminate the findings through the report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Joseph, followed by Santiago Rubio and Chauncey Marterell. Yes, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is Joseph Vjelav. I'm the Policy Director, Chair of the Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights in Los Angeles. We are here in strong support of the reestablishment of the Office of Immigrant Affairs. We strongly believe that this office is a critical step to ensure that all immigrants and new Americans are integrating to our city. In our perception, immigrant integration is a shared and mutual obligation among the new Americans in the city to ensure that we follow our core principles of liberty and democracy. And in light of the prospects of immigration reform, this office is critical, given that in the Senate Propose Bill, there's actually an office of new Americans that will be established at the national level. So the city, once again, is leading the effort to ensure that we are a step ahead, given that we are promoting this office, and with that, we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Chauncey, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. My name is Chauncey Martrell, Executive Director of the Thai Community Development Center. As an immigrant myself and Executive Director of an organization that champions the rights of immigrants, I want to wholeheartedly endorse the establishment of the Office of Immigrant Affairs. Immigrants have always been recognized as the lifeblood of this country, and now, more than ever, immigrants must be recognized as the lifeblood of Los Angeles. It is immigrant entrepreneurship, immigrant labor, immigrant spending, immigrant activism, and participation in civic life that have kept vast segments of the city alive and kept them from becoming vast abandoned wastelands like some of the major urban centers we have seen on the East Coast. So having this mayor's office of immigrant affairs would be a low-cost investment for a city of Los Angeles that could yield some very high returns. What would Central Los Angeles be without Koreatown, Chinatown, Little Tokyo, Taitown, all the other ethnic enclaves that kept these neighborhoods pushing and pulsing with economic activity and community life when the rest of the world turned its back on these neighborhoods?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Maybe I must have heard a different speech because I believe when Councilman Garcetti was discussing this, he mentioned relaunching the position. So my question would be, what happened to the original position if this is a relaunch? I think about the ratepayer advocate. Oh, that was a voted position. We heard a lot of discussion about staffing of officers by the CLA, but we didn't hear anything on, well, we'll wait till the budget discussion. So I hope you keep that in mind when you're talking about this and you're talking about 911 operators who are so shortly staffed. Which one are you going to choose? I believe the mayor was also consolidating some offices. Isn't he considering consolidating building and safety with planning and land use? So if he's consolidating offices, he's going to turn around and create new offices. And finally, one of the gentlemen mentioned that New York City has a charter motion. You're talking about an ordinance. There's a slight difference, isn't it? You vote for charter amendments. That's what the public votes on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Someone brought your phone down.
Oh, okay. Mr. Garcetti, you want to close, or we're good?
I just want to thank everybody for...
Your card wasn't in here. I had no card on it. No, you're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Wash. Okay, I have no card. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you again to the groups that have come here that were a part of this today, and thank you for the coalition that has come together to make sure that this office, which will be putting Los Angeles to the front of the line for these services and honor our own history here in Los Angeles as well as our present, I ask for your I-vote today. This will be something that I know that will help bring more money to Los Angeles, help strengthen our economy and our communities, and my thanks to everybody who took time to very patiently wait here today to testify in support of this. Adelante, let's go forward and make this get done. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Ms. Perry.
Item 6.
Fourth with, okay, Mr. Zine, item 6.
Mr. President, on item number 6, we now have the Fire Department and we have the Controller's Office, and this is the Controller's Audit, Ambulance Building Services, and the impact of Assembly Bill 678. What Assembly Bill 678 does is provide state funding for our paramedic service that we're not receiving funding for now. In many of the cases, our ambulance collection is at the national average, and the national average is about 40%, which means 60% is not being collected, and the Assembly Bill 678 hopefully will rectify some, if not all of that. So if we can have the Fire Department representative, Ms. Gibson, along with our Controller's representatives' comment in how this money is going to come in, how it's going to be spent, is it going to help the Fire Department since they're over 300 firefighters short of their allocation, et cetera, et cetera? So Ms. Gibson, will you start, and then we'll hit the Controller's folks?
June Gibson with the Fire Department. The department is anticipating that we'll be receiving reimbursement of approximately $23 million by the end of this fiscal year.
$23 million this fiscal year?
Correct. In accordance with city policy, the funding would go into general fund receipts unless the city council decides otherwise.
So $23 million between now and the end of June?
Correct.
And then, what's our anticipated revenue on an annual basis?
We're anticipating $10 million in subsequent years.
How many?
$10 million.
So that's a $10 million addition to the general fund, which then the general fund funds many programs and services. So how assured are we that we're going to receive those dollars? And where's that money going to come from?
The money is coming from the federal government. It's going to come directly from the Center for Medicare Services. The process is still being analyzed by CMS. We have been assured by the state that CMS will be providing a response this month with respect to the cost methodology. And then subsequently, we would have to submit an application through the state, but the state has reassured us that they will process payment directly to the city before the end of this fiscal year.
So with that, how far back can we go on the collections under this bill?
The $23 million will cover the period from January 2010 through the end of this fiscal year.
So we can't go beyond 2010?
No, sir.
Okay, and then hopefully in the future, this funding will continue to assist our general fund, and then hopefully, if the council wishes, a portion of that can go to maintain the fire and other emergency services. But it's not earmarked for that at this time, it's just general fund money.
Correct, and that would be an appropriate subject for discussion during the budget hearings, which will be forthcoming.
This month?
Correct.
And the Controller's Office, on your audit, you found information that feeds into this?
Time, Mr. Zine.
Yeah, fair, it's a fraud at Controller's Office. We concur with what Ms. Gibson is saying, which is very concerned that there may be a possibility that we do not receive the money before the end of the fiscal year. That is a caution that we raise in our report.
So the audit found that we're receiving approximately...
Dennis, push your button again, we're going to lose a corner.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Parks.
Okay, I'll come back.
Mr. Parks. Oh, Mr. Parks, then we go to Mr. Rosendorf. I do want the members to know, we have people excused. Mr. Rosendorf?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This, once again, is something we have to look at. Look, my constituents are worried every minute of every day if they're going to be able to get from where they live to medical emergencies. So 80% or more of our Fire Department personnel deal with medical emergencies, so it's a big deal. Tell me, when we look at AB 678, and Mr. Zine and I asked these questions, and I'm looking forward to this going to the Budget Committee, I might add, has any further progress been made, or have we received any additional indications that we will receive this revenue during the current fiscal year? Yes or no?
As I indicated, we received reassurance from the state that CMS will be providing them a response this month.
Excellent.
Which would then allow the city to process our cost report through the state and to get reimbursed by the end of this fiscal year.
Great, and as soon as we hear that, we'll go public with it so that our constituents realize that we have a better step forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, last question is, at what point do we need to have a backup plan if we fail to receive AB 678 revenue? Are there other options other than federal fund to fill the revenue gap?
We've had ongoing discussions with the CAO with the eventuality that the promises that were made to us by the federal government and by the state do not come to pass.
Right.
So they are prepared to balance the budget if the $23 million does not come in.
Great, excellent. And thank you very much, Mr. President, for that.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, yesterday I was, spent some quality time with Station 85 in Harbor City, was also part of a training exercise with the Urban Search and Rescue down at the point at the southern tip of San Pedro. And what I heard from the firefighters, in light of Chief Cummings' recommendation of removing a firefighter to increase the amount of rescue ambulances in the city, and he's been responsive to our concerns as a body here in ensuring that we help with our response times and, as we heard in Public Safety Committee, I just want to make sure that these funds, these AB 678 funds, although it's going to help the general fund, be earmarked to our Fire Department. Is that possible?
That would be a council decision.
Well, you know, colleagues, I encourage this body as we move forward in the next fiscal year, especially during budget deliberations, that we consider just that, that you're looking at $10, $11 million that we can clearly up our rescue ambulances numbers throughout the city of Los Angeles. In fact, can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we specifically earmark these dollars to the general, to the Fire Department.
Mr. Buscaino, I would hope that you would defer to the Chair of Budget and Finance, and as they're beginning the process, you should, you know, let him know where you are. We don't want Mr. Kocorian to go into budget deliberations already handcuffed, so...
You know, I'm just passionate about this issue, and Mr. Kocorian definitely, will definitely talk as we move forward during budget deliberations. Thank you.
All of us are passionate, though, Joe, about this. Mr. Zine?
Okay, I know we don't want to belabor the point. Hopefully, during the discussions of the budget, maybe we can't earmark it all, but some, because I know the chief wants to put more rescue units out, and this will give us opportunity to do that, so we can discuss that at the appropriate time. But I think my colleague has a great idea. We need to maintain that public safety, it's critical. So thank you to the Controller's Office, thank you to the Fire Department. The money's coming in, it'll help our deficit at this particular time, and we appreciate the fact that we're going to get a reimbursement and increase that revenue that paramedics utilize to save people's lives throughout the city of LA. So we wish to get an I-vote and move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for this good discussion. The AB 678 revenues have been a topic of a lot of discussion in the Budget and Finance Committee, and these revenues that we're talking about to be reimbursed for to date have already been assumed in our budget to date, so any transfer of these funds now would actually add to the deficit. So we need to make sure that for this reimbursement, it continues to be where it belongs, otherwise we're adding to our deficit. So going forward in the coming budget that the mayor is about to release, we don't know what the mayor is going to be proposing, but there will be future AB 678 revenues that we'll also be dealing with through the budgetary process, and I think that that is the appropriate time to do that. What I'd ask, Mr. President, in light of the proximity of our soon-to-be-released budget, that further consideration of the motion be sent to Budget and Finance Committee, and we'll include this, all my colleagues' views in this discussion in the course of our ordinary budget process.
Okay, well, I don't think that's necessary. Didn't you already indicate you're comfortable in talking?
I meant the underlying matter, but I think Mr. Buscaino and I will definitely work on his suggestion. I think it's a good one, and going forward, it's something that we're going to want to closely consider.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Ms. Perry, are you ready with item 2?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Kocorian.
Mr. President, my motion 2A has been circulated.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. This is the motion and the work to have our city pension funds divest themselves from investments in manufacturers and retailers of guns and ammunition. I did not want to note and file this item. I wanted us to go back to Budget and Finance, where we will await reports from Fire and Police and the Department of Water and Power Pension. At this point, I think the only report we've gotten back has been from Lasers, and in addition, and I thank the Chair of Budget and Finance for seconding this motion, I had asked for the amendment to allow corporate notes referenced in the report that you have in the Office of Finance to mature, and ask the Office of Finance to no longer invest in companies which manufacture or sell guns and ammunition effective upon the adoption of this motion 2A. So there's two requests I have, and one is to send the original item back to Budget and Finance and to not note and file it, because note and filing effectively ends it, and then there will be no further discussion. And then the second one is this item 2A, to send this to committee for hearing.
Excuse me, Mr. President, just for clarification, Ms. Perry, are you requesting to submit just the motion for, or the whole item?
The entire item.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, no speakers on the queue.
So I said, I did not want it to be noted and filed. I wanted it all go back to committee.
Okay, but I have one speaker on that, Mr. Arnold Sacks. Arnold Sacks?
My work here is done.
Yes, thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I'm sorry, very clear, and I appreciate your action, Ms. Perry, but is that based on companies that sell guns and ammunition, or is it the pension divester from companies that manufacture the weapons? that manufacture the weapons? Because there's a difference between actually manufacturing the weapons...
Yeah, well, no, he wanted it sooner than...
Because their manufacturing is going up.
Just because that's what he wanted.
Their profits are going up.
It has to be that way.
And have you found a comparable company or a comparable investment for that money that you take out? Because you need to keep that investment fund up, otherwise you need to contribute from the city's general fund to cover the shortfalls that created in the retirement funds. So I appreciate it, but again, is it the sale of the weapons and the ammunition, or is it the manufacture of the weapons and ammunition that you're looking to divest from? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sacks.
It's an amendment to the report.
Mr. Englander. Oh, and Ms. Perry, the clerk has suggested that we vote on, you know, accepting your amendment and then refer it back to committee.
Okay, then everything goes back, including my request, so then we are not voting on a note and file.
Yes.
Just for clarification.
Yes, yes. Mr. Englander, and again, let me remind you, we're gonna lose a quorum.
Yeah, it's the first time I'm speaking and asking one quick question if I could, Mr. President, and that is that I do support the symbolism, and particularly now, why we need to divest and lead by example. My question to Ms. Perry, though, on this is, do we have a CAO report on the impacts and what it could mean, and what types of companies we're talking about?
Yeah, well, actually, let me just give you, I don't know if it...
Because I don't know, I haven't seen one.
Well, yeah, there was, there has been...
That has all that detail?
It's a report from Lasers that was a part of the record.
Just from Lasers.
And I don't wanna quote from memory, because I don't remember the exact figure, but it was, I think, over $130 million, but that was only the Lasers report, and that was only one fund, and we still have not received a report from fire, police, and DWP.
Because a lot of these, again, we gotta remember that a lot of the companies perhaps we do business with, if you will, not just investments, we do purchase quite a bit from these manufacturers just for our own police department as well, so...
Well, yeah, I mean, that, obviously...
I think we gotta look at some of those things, okay.
Yes, I understand, and one of the, well, you probably can guess who some of the largest retailers were, I don't need to say that, you know, and make a commercial out of it, but, yeah, it's pretty significant.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Perry, you wanna close?
I think I'm, I think we're okay now.
Okay.
The clerk has clarified, and I just wanted to make sure the action was clarified.
Okay, so let's vote to accept the amendment, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And we're directing that this be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Krikorian, for a very important announcement.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I will be brief, I just wanted to make a very special introduction, because our chamber is joined today by a man who's fighting for our city and fighting for the San Fernando Valley every day in Sacramento, the great representative of the 46th Assembly District, Assembly Member Adrien Nazarian.
Hey, Adrien. We're gonna be counting on you up there.
Very good, very good.
Item four, Mr. Walsh. Item four, John Walsh.
All you have to do is go there and just go like that, and you go right to J. Walsh Confidential. This is number four relative, this is the REAP. As you know, they lost my card again, under public comment, because they didn't want me to face Garcetti. From now on, I will hand in 100 cards for public comment at every meeting, so little Herbie Dwerby doesn't...
Stay on the item.
The item is, why am I up here? And the reason is, public comment, and I can't get up here if you lose my card.
He has not talked about this item yet.
You gotta stay on, you have to stay on your item, and I did not lose your card, Mr. Walsh.
Anybody but Garcetti for mayor, he does a terrible...
Stay on the item, stay on the item, okay, let's vote on this, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item five, Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. This item refers to a debt payment by the DWP, but generally speaking, debt payment in of itself, there is no amount here. So as an example, I would like to point out that in this story from the L.A. Times regarding the renovations of the Justice Building right across the street, that the CEO for the county mentions that the debt payment on the renovations would amount to $439 million over 30 years. Why is no debt payment amounts or plan applying here? And I'd also like to point out that this story about Massachusetts Rail System mentions that people here call the Big Dig Hangover. It's the multimillion-dollar debt payment from the nation's most expensive highway program. And finally, I'd like to point out, you mentioned getting some general fund money for the fire department. Why not apply that money to the general debt service payment that the city has? You had a presentation in here by the CLA, CRA, CRO, whatever, use your own alphabet, and he mentioned last, I believe it was in October, maybe it was a little bit after that, that this year's debt payment would be about $225 million, and in four years, it'll be approximately $1 billion. Well, doing the math, four times $225 million, a little bit here, a little bit there, comes to about $1 billion. So what are you gonna do to decrease the city's debt payment on its structural deficit? Why not apply this money to the structural deficit if you find it so terrible and you wanna do so much to decrease it? Use the money there. Get rid of, lower these debt payments that you always seem to find...
Okay, your time's expired. Okay, on this item, members, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Sacks, I'm gonna call...
11 ayes.
I'm gonna call item 11, so you should...
I'll be... No, one second, sir.
Now then, start running this time.
I'm not...
Okay, then we pass on that. Okay, let's open the roll.
Mr. President, just for the record, substitute motion for item 11 has been circulated.
Okay, well, let's prepare to vote as amended, or the substitute motion, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item seven, Mr. Walsh, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and then, just like that, and you go to J. Walsh Confidential. There's a new blog up today on J. Walsh Confidential, and this is number seven on the agenda. We really enjoy waiting an hour and a half for all the presentations.
Stay on the item.
Stay on the item. This is Concerns, the Audit and Governmental Efficiency Committee. I understand that is the one that Ron Galperin runs, isn't it? Where is he? He must be out campaigning. So although we're a little shaky on Mr. Zine, we still support Mr. Zine for the job of a controller, and this audited financial statement of the city of Los Angeles, you should be talking about that. That's a little Wendy Controller's report.
On the item.
With a little Controller report, I'm reading from the item and I'm not on the item.
I didn't, I didn't see, look, you're disrupting the meeting, stay on the topic.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I read communications from Chair, tell me when I'm off the topic. Audits and governmental efficiency, am I off the topic? Note and file, am I off the topic? The February 28, 2013 Controller Report, am I off the topic? Relative to the financial fiscal year 2011, am I off the topic? 12, am I off the topic? Audit it, am I off the topic? Finance, am I off the topic? Statements, am I off the topic? This whole group, HollywoodHighlands.org, find out what's really happening. Am I off the topic? Then I was.
Okay, let's, Mr. Zine?
Just for clarification, Mr. President, we heard these in committee, everything was in order, there was an outside order, Simpson and Simpson said that everything was done in a proper fashion, so there were no errors, and it was done in a proper fashion, that's what the committee report is, and what we'd like to do with this is note and file, since everything was in order, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll go to item 11, I think, Mr., 17, I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks, 17, item 17.
And for the record, Mr. President, a substitute motion has been circulated for item 17.
Okay, come on, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Question of ethics arising in city, you know what's fascinating about this item? I believe when you campaigned for the extension on the term limits, the third term limit...
It has, that's not on here, that has nothing to do with the item, it doesn't.
Part of your campaigning was that you would increase the ethics of the city council. We would be the most ethical group ever.
That has nothing to do with a legal services contract.
It says relating to ethics issues arising out of the 2013 election. Now, maybe your ethics and my definition of ethics are two different things, but I see ethics here. I remember your campaign promises...
You have to stay, this has nothing to do with that campaign, it has nothing to do with the campaign, Arnold, it's about hiring outside, I'll give him 20 seconds if he will stay on the topic.
I am just discussing the fact that that was part of the campaigning, and here you're looking for ethics issues arising out of the 2013 elections.
It has nothing to do with that, Arnold, thank you, okay, let's prepare, let's prepare to vote on it, his time is over, let's open the roll, you're disrupting the meeting, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Item 12, John Walsh, please come forward on item 12.
I handed in a card for public comment. This is the worst waste of money I have ever seen in my life, and I've been going to these meetings since 1971, okay, '71, not in this city, in other cities, in California. This is $2,000 to ASCAP. They control the publishing right and the musical rights to songs, so that they can get royalties. We are going to give ASCAP $2,000 at, we're hundreds of millions over budget, so we can change the music on the phone while you're waiting to be connected. In other words, that's gonna cost us $2,000, because they're using songs that have copyright. You understand, they have songs that are copyrighted. So we are gonna give ASCAP $2,000. Meanwhile, people are choking to death, and the paramedics are arriving 10 or 15 seconds later. So apparently, you out there are bored with the music that you have to listen to when you are waiting for a connection at City Hall. So we're gonna get some brand-new songs, and we're gonna have to pay the people who wrote those songs $2,000, in a city where some Chinese people at USC were murdered over a $40 phone. We are gonna spend $2,000, and they don't give a damn, they don't give a damn here. Come to HollywoodHighlands.org, this is the worst, why don't we just play the same damn music and save the $2,000 damn dollars?
Okay, let's vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with all that, thank you very much.
Is, Mr. Labons, Mr. Labons, Mr. Labons.
Fourth with.
All right, item 15, Mr. Walsh, oh, he's out of time, Mr. Sacks, is Mr. Sacks out of time as well? Okay, so no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, we're gonna move to item eight, called special by Mr. Zine, I believe, and we do have a card on it, Mr. Zine, so let me...
Okay, Mr. Garcetti, number eight.
We're doing number eight, I have a card from John Walsh, but he's out of time, so, Mr. Garcetti, you wanna open on this?
Sure, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Zine, for calling special, I'll invite the staff to the table here. Colleagues, it's mind-boggling that the second-largest city in the United States has no oversight to date over valet parking, but that changes today with a common sense solution. Sorry, eight?
Eight, yeah, I want to tell them...
Oh, item number eight, yeah, yeah. This changes today with this common sense solution. Today, with the passage of this, and we have also a special item on the special meeting, number 19, but we can't take them up simultaneously, so we'll take up those issues in a moment. We'll undergo background checks and have licenses. Cars will be parked off-street and not take up meter or residential spaces. We'll stop fly-by-night operators who rip off customers and businesses alike, and this ordinance was developed by my office in coordination with businesses, valets, residents, and law enforcement. And I have to give a special shout-out as well to the good work that was done by Channel 4 in the research that they did. We all agree there's something good for business and good for neighborhoods. We need to make sure that the people are in control of the streets. We've seen bad valets who have done illegal things, ruined cars, taken money from cars who've parked in meters that are meant for the people, and that is something that stops today. We have a lot of neighboring cities that have similar regimes set up, and I wanna thank L.A. DOT, the Police Commission, the City Attorney's Office, and everybody who really has worked on this. I know it's been a long journey, but one well worth it, so that we will have a cost for our operators and our attendants, but that cost will help us enforce regular rules and get back in control of the streets. So I don't need to go on much more than that, I just wanna thank you. This is gonna be a proud day when we move this forward, I ask for your support. I know that there's other places that have looked at this as well, but we now in Los Angeles have the opportunity to take our streets back and make sure our valets have to play by the rules. Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Yes, I just, I don't have any questions, but a few comments that I just wanted to make, and thank Mr. Garcetti for coming up with this and all the work that's been done by so many folks on this, there's been a tremendous amount of work. It's unbelievable to think that you can pull up somewhere in your vehicle, throw somebody your keys because they say they're valet, and walk away, not knowing at all who they are, and you think about the security ramifications that come along with that. There's no identification requirements whatsoever that you're literally handing over a set of keys to your car, with valuables, with things inside that can track you to your home. It's just unbelievable that we exist today, and the public safety threats that exist today, that we don't have any background checks, insurance requirements... today, that we don't have any background checks, insurance requirements, we have no idea who these people are, not to mention how much money they're not paying the City of Los Angeles and ripping us off every single day, ripping off the taxpayers. Dennis Zine and I went out on patrol together and did a special sting operation to go out there and check on a lot of these operators. And I know Mr. Zine's going to speak about that a little bit. But it's unbelievable how many there are, back-to-back-to-back, on Ventura Boulevard, on Sepulveda Boulevard, on the west side, just throughout the entire city. So, this regulation is way overdue. I asked a lot of questions. I came up with almost every kind of possible crazy scenario that you can fathom, where businesses might not support it, where it can hurt operators, where it could create traffic congestion, every possible scenario that we could possibly throw at these guys. And they had every single answer and solution, not just off the top of their head, but in writing and in all their reports. They have worked so well to craft this legislation with Mr. Garcetti's office that they need to be applauded because this is not just public policy, this is good public policy that's coming now out of this body that will now make the city a better and safer place. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. And I wanted to acknowledge the staff that's put this together. Also, Mr. Garcetti, Hollywood has made a major turnaround with all of the activity. And with the valet parking, this is one aspect. But Mr. Englander and I did go out on our reserve capacity as police officers with Commission Investigation Division, did enforcement. And as has been stated, it is just absolutely an open field of opportunity for people to do what they want to do. As far as the 10% tax we're supposed to receive, that's not being done, as far as having a driver's license, et cetera. So, this is going to give them identification. There'll be checks. They will wear a vest. We will know who the valet parker is. This is the first aspect. There's still the issue about getting the revenue from the parking lots where you self-park and you pay in that lot, getting the 10% tax that is supposed to come to the city where we know the controller did an audit and found out that most of them aren't paying that. So, we're still pursuing that. But this is the first activity that's going to take place when it comes to the folks who go to a location and the valet takes that car. And many of the valets are parking them on the street. Some put money in the meter when there's a meter area, some aren't. But this will bring in a regulation that's long, long overdue. So, I want to acknowledge the folks that have put this together from the different entities to make it work. The CID, Commission Investigation, and the LAPD has a small staff but very aggressive in doing this. But we went to some major hotels, major enterprises that have this valet, totally out of compliance, no permits, no nothing. This will set a new standard, and the safety of the people with their cars is what's paramount, as well as protecting the City of Los Angeles and the taxpayer. So, I want to acknowledge the hard work you did and thank Mr. Englander for the detail that we did, along with the Commission Investigation staff and Mr. Garcetti. What's happening in Hollywood is happening throughout Los Angeles, as we see the opportunities improve in the business climate, so we'll have more of these valet parking takes place. Now, there'll be regulations to make sure it's done in a proper fashion. It's not anti-business, it's pro-business, and it's going to take care of the taxpayer who's driving to those destinations. So, thank you all for making it happen.
Mr. Rosendahl.
That's very articulately said, Mr. Zine. I've been pushing for this since I came on the council in the very beginning, which was eight years ago. So, as I leave the council in July, I am thrilled and honored to see that this direction is now being followed through on. They're out of control. And the more we control them and the more we regulate them, the more successful the city will be. And Richard, you're nodding your head quite nicely. It's because it's your responsibility for the follow-through. Explain your role in this.
The Commission Investigation Division, which is a portion of the Order Police Commissioners, will be the permitting entity. We will work with the Department of Transportation as to the issuance of the permits to the valet parking operators and also to the valet parking attendants. And that permitting process, we have a very detailed plan of implementation. We'll be reaching out to the community that parks cars, both the auto parks and the valet operators via mail. We're also going to have our officers go out, once the ordinance becomes effective, do onsite visits. We're going to do education, bring them in for meetings. We're going to decentralize the meetings throughout the city, reach out to the various city associations and bids, so we can educate them of what the valets need to do to get everybody into compliance.
Totally, totally puts a smile on my face. The valet person himself has protection, the valet operator has a secure plan in place, and we, the taxpayers, the taxpayers, aren't going to be paying all this money, and you will get a revenue stream that will help us, correct?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, did you want to close?
Thank you. So, thank you. I know that there was folks here to answer questions. They're very patient. I know that they got drilled and grilled by Mr. Englander to make sure that there was good stuff here. I don't know if we can move to amend. I don't think we name ordinances anymore. But I would call it the Anna Garcia Responsible Valet Parking Ordinance if we could. So, share that with her and thank her for her good work. You know, this is actually one of those cases that we knew what was going on, but the press doing sting operation after sting operation, showing folks who were making their own signs and putting them up, messing with our spaces. And the strength, you know, the thing that really, for me, besides the complaints I was hearing that cemented this for me, is as a city council member, I would drive up sometimes in my own district, and there were cones that were put out on the street. And I'd get out and I'd tell those folks that that's illegal. And they'd say no to me. I'd say, "No, no, they are illegal." And they'd say, "Who are you?" And I'd say, "A council member." They'd say, "No, we can do that." I'd say, "No, I'm from the city. I know the law." I'd show them my badge, and then they'd reluctantly move them. But some of them absolutely wouldn't. There was just the arrogance of, "Hey, we put a cone out, and this is our street. This is the people's street now again. They can't do that again, and we've got the police behind us." So, make sure if you're, we love valets when they're responsible, but it's time to get the irresponsible ones out of town. Thank you.
Okay, members, let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, I'm going to take...
As amended.
As amended. I'm going to take two general public comment cards. We'll jump around a little bit. So, Arnold Sax and John Walsh, this is your general public comment. I'll get back to you, Mr. Jones.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org. And this is the third meeting that Mr. Garcetti has attended out of the last 15 meetings. He was here because he wanted to campaign for the Armenian community and the Jewish community. That's why he was here. Herb has given him, Herb excused him from this meeting. I have the document. He excused him from the meeting. And he has a deal with Herb that he'll show up any time he wants. He said it in the L.A. Times. He blamed you. He blamed Herb on it, blaming on the colored guy. "Oh, I had nothing to do with it." Now...
What color am I?
Huh?
You said colored guy, what color?
What color are you?
Yeah.
The opposite of my color. But you act white. I tell you right now, you act white. And you, Massa is Massa Garcetti, and you're on his plantation, and they bought you off. And I would like Parks to attack you for saying that. Because he's basically...
Boy, that's about... Let's hold his time, Mr. Englander.
And incidentally, you do not...
I think that, hold his time and shut him off. Shut him off. All right.
I appreciate free speech like anybody else, but I think what's being stated here is more of hate speech, and it's really blurring that line. And I just want to go on record that I don't support this speech and anything we can do in our rules, our rules of decorum. And I know it's a matter of First Amendment, but I don't think any of us have to stand by and listen to it.
Okay, then finish. Mr. City Attorney, you have, are you going to ref?
Just if, if the council determines that his comments and conduct have created a disruption, then he can be asked and then told to leave. So, the key is whether a disruption has occurred. Arguably, he has disrupted the meeting because the council's come to a standstill. However, a court may say, "Well, that disruption was caused by the council itself."
Okay. Go, go on, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, let me, let me say that the reason I'm saying this is there was a appellate federal ruling, two to one, recently, and you darn-well know it. And what it said was insolent speech is protected speech under the First Amendment. And I was insolent, but I have a right in this country to be insolent. If I was in Juarez, I would be killed. There are four or five countries in the world that allow people to say this. And if you, I'm going to finish by telling you what's really insolent. I would say that if every single one of you that is voting for Garcetti had an enema, you would all find that you have Garcetti's DNA in your enema. HollywoodHighlands.org, that's insolent.
But not disruptive.
Mr. Sax, General Pot, start his time.
Thank you, Arnold Sax. On Wednesday's meeting, just as an example, you had an item on your agenda, and not to pick on you, Councilman Englander, it was regarding the signage, the advertising signage. But the item read vehicles wrapped for advertising and not the advertising stands. If you go back and just check, you will see that it's regulating advertising displays on motor vehicles, not on the stands. That being said, I'd like to jump to transportation a little bit, because recently, the Transportation Committee has had a couple of special meetings. One of them was regarding the disposition of Measure R funding, and the other was Measure R local funding to increase speeding up projects. But prior to those meetings, back in February, the city council allocated $228 million for the next 23 years in local Measure R funds for the downtown streetcar. And they also allocated $100,000, $1 million for Measure R for the local streetcar. And Councilman Parks made a motion, posted it, but never brought it up in council chambers regarding $30 million in excess funds for the Lemur Park Station. So, this, by the way, is the fiscal year sales tax revenue forecast from an MTA. The actual revenue for Measure R in 2010, $565 million. 2011, $601 million. 2012, $648 million. Measure R was supposed to generate $1.333 billion in revenue. You're a little bit short. How are you generating...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, your time has expired. Okay, now we're going to go to Mr. Jones. I told you I'd call you. We're going to do item 16. I have one more, and then we'll get back to you. I will not forget you, sir. Okay, Mr. Garcetti, item 16.
Thank you. This was a motion that we put forward between myself, Mr. Englander, and Mr. Buscaino to instruct the Information Technology Agency to develop initial City of Los Angeles pilot on open data. As we've seen in government, the sharing of data is a great way for folks on the outside, our constituents, engineering teams, companies, nonprofits, to come in, to use that data, try to solve everyday problems. And it's certainly been a great way that other cities and federal government has increasingly done that. For instance, a great way of using data that was shared with me by the CIO of the country was using GPS units in people's asthma inhalers. And wherever they needed to have and use the inhalers, they were able to map that so they could see clusters of where maybe building sites were not taking care of their dust and things like that. The more that we can open our data up, we have really robust data on traffic, we have really robust data on crime. In certain areas, we don't have very robust data. But part of it is to try to open this up. So, just very briefly, if our general manager of ITA, CTO, would like to talk a little bit maybe about what we could do to develop that, I'd love to hear your thoughts and see if we might be able to move forward on initial pilot with us.
Thank you, Councilman. Steve Reniker with the Information Technology Agency. We, we have actually explored with all the departments out there, and as you had indicated, there are several hundreds of data sets that exist out there. Some of them are available through public records requests, some of them are really defragmented and all over the city. So, we don't really have a centralized forum on our LACity.org website that really highlights all those key data sets that are available for the public to access, as well as our developer community that's out there. We, on June 1st, have a L.A. Hackathon that's part of a national effort that'll be here and hosted here. And a lot of the entrepreneurs locally have reached out to the ITA and have indicated, "What could we do to not only provide some, some data sets for them to utilize for that event, but also what types of applications would it be of interest to departments that maybe they could take a stab at in developing a mobile app or maybe even a web app for, for our website?" So, what we have done is we've gone out and we've reached out to all the directors of systems from all the departments of the city and asked them for some data sets that they would be able to release by the end of this month. And our hope would be that we would be able to have a pilot up, just using city resources, not asking for any funding this time, just to do what we can to get a pilot up for probably about a dozen, maybe 10 to 12 data sets, and just see how we can leverage that with the community out there. And then over time, look at how we can make an additional investment around that pilot. So, that's what we'd like to recommend to you today.
Thank you. And that should be very exciting. The data sets are available, I know, in many cases. Just one case, though, so many of the data sets that aren't available. I was interviewed yesterday by KCT about Quimby funds. And around these horseshoes, we've heard a lot about Quimby funds, which are supposed to use for parks, and they can't give us real-time snapshots of how much money has been put in by developers for parks that we're supposed to be spending and sharing that with the public. And it's been a recurrent and frustrating thing for our constituents, saying, "How much Quimby fees are out there? We want to build a park. We want to buy some land. We want to turn into open space, and we can't get that real time." So, I hope as part of this too, let's, let's go forward with that and let us develop, as we can, assistance to make data a little bit more easier to obtain. We know it's there. Sometimes there's resistance to it that's human, sometimes it's technological. But in doing that and moving that forward, I think we'll have a great way to be able to collaborate with, with very wise people, they're called the constituents that we serve. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. Mr. Jones, Brian Barajas. And Winton Johnson.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones, and I'm on behalf of AB-5, the Homeless Bill of Rights. I have a fact sheet compiled by the Western Regional Advocacy Project at 2940 16th Street, Suite 200-2, San Francisco, California. The law that segregates, that makes criminals a people based on their status rather than their behavior, or that prohibits certain people's rights to be in public spaces that are not just sad relics from the past, today's numerous laws infringe on poor people's ability to exist in public space, to acquire housing, employment, basic services, and to equal protection under the law. The Homeless Bill of Rights is a response, is in, is a response that can help alleviate poverty and homelessness while protecting homeless people from discrimination, ensuring that their right to privacy and their personal property. Assemblymember Tom Amorito, I guess, Democrat from San Francisco, is the author of AB-5, the California Homeless Persons Bill of Rights and Fairness Act, which will be before the Senate House in California's state legislature next week. It already passed the Representative House, so it's halfway through. I would appreciate any advocacy or any promotion of AB-5. It's the line in the sand for the people who are most affected by this economy, because we're almost living in the sand. Please consider AB-5, Assembly Bill 5, it's going before, a consideration before the California Senate next week, and hopefully we can move forward and let's get some answers issued. The ad hoc committee was a gross, gross statement from the City of Los Angeles by Mr. Englander and Mr. Parks's objection to the Homeless Bill of Rights.
Mr. Parks. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mr. Barajas.
All right. Now, I'm going to read something for everybody here. Quote, "Systemically important financial institution, or SIFI, does fail, I have little doubt that private investors will, in fact, bear the losses, even if this leads to an outcome that is messier and more costly to society than we would ideally like," end quote. Now, he refers, and I'll specify who this is, he refers to Title II to the Dodd-Frank Bill, quote, "orderly liquidation authority by imposing losses on shareholders and creditors." Now, this is, this is end quote. But this individual, his name is Jeremy Stein, who is the appointee by the Obama himself to the Federal Reserve Board. This is his comment on Wednesday, April 17, 2013, at the IMF seminar, Rethinking Micropolicy II on Regulating Large Financial Institutions. Now, if you go to the comments... Now, if you go to the comments I made on Tuesday, Wednesday, this is the intention. They're going to steal everybody's money. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. It's not money anymore, according to these individuals. Now, remember, Obama appointed these guys. Has anybody looked into Obama's appointments lately? Now, I'll end with this. HR 129, "If you really want to stop this insanity, HR 129 Glass-Steagall Act." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Parks? Okay, I got you. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go to the special meeting right now. So, we'll temporarily recess this meeting and go to the special meeting. Please call the roll.
Alarcon Buscaino, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Carrasco Correa, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Weston, Levin, is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll take up Item 19 first. I have cards. That's Mr. John Walsh. Arnold Sax, on Item 19 in the special meeting.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sax. It's nice that this actually piggybacks on the item that you heard in the regular agenda. Because part of the discussion that was brought up in the regular agenda was that this is a common sense solution. I believe there's four, maybe four or five council people in here, third term. Common sense solution, third term. It's almost an oxymoron. And I appreciate Councilman Garcetti giving a shout out to Channel 4. Maybe that's a new public-private partnership that the city is looking to get into, where they investigate how well the city is being run. But my most important part of this whole item, and we heard discussions about there'll be a revenue source. Will there be a revenue source for enforcement? I'm thinking of the ordinance that you put out for blighted homes that was $1,000 a day to go after the banks and not keeping up on homes that become blighted in the neighborhood.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item on this special meeting agenda.
I am talking about enforcement efforts, Mr. City Attorney. Maybe if they cut a little bit.
No, 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 Mr. Sax, just adhere, please.
I am talking about enforcement.
Adhere to 19.
Enforcement efforts were brought up by the council chambers. We will have a revenue source. So, I'm looking at how this will be.
He is continuing to talk about an irrelevant relation to this matter.
We'll get back on the topic.
This is an item regarding valet parking and policies and requirements. Policies. Policies include enforcement, do they not, Mr. City Attorney?
No, this is not a question and answer. Just keep talking.
Well, it seems to be, sir. I lose my time.
No, okay, your time, your time is up. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com. I'm an expert on this. I've lived since 1976, right near Capitol Records. Now, let me tell you that this is what we need. There's not enough parking. So, what the parking valets do, and incidentally, I have never in my life seen an African-American parking valet.
Stay on the subject.
We're talking about valet parking. I'm talking about valet parking. And nobody in Hollywood hires a black parking valet. So, what they do is they park in my neighborhood. They pick up the car. They park three or four blocks later, and they're forced by their racist club owners to actually run back and forth. Being Hispanic, they understand what, how evil a boss can be. So, what is happening is the cars, they collect the money, the valet parking money, the clubs in Hollywood, Eric's Boys, who are putting money in there. Then, they get in the car and drive three or four blocks away. Then, when you show up after you've bought your drugs at the clubs and after you've gotten high at the all-white clubs, all white, as I've said. Now, the clubs that are run daily, occasionally, by blacks, they're integrated. But all other clubs are racist.
He has strayed from the valet parking aspects.
Now, what they do, when they take the club, they go park in my neighborhood. Now, when the person comes back out drunk, then the parking valet has to run four or five blocks to my neighborhood with the key, put it in there, and drive back. So, what this actually is a good motion is that we should investigate what's happening. But don't expect it from the racist scum of the club owners in Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org. You are racist, Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, let's... Mrs. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. This goes along with the earlier comments on the parking situation. This will permit the city to receive revenue. When those valets do park on the public roadway, we will receive revenue for that. It provides the businesses that are expanding an opportunity to bring in more business and regulate the valet, as we already discussed. But this provides the street parking, where there'll be requirements and fees to the city. So, it's a good process. And as businesses expand, we'll probably have more of these, which will benefit the business community and give people an opportunity to go out and spend money and help make L.A. greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now, let's go to Item 18. No speakers in the queue. We have already fulfilled the public comment requirement. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. President, there's a request for Item 19 to go forth with.
Without objection. Let's adjourn this meeting and go back into the regular meeting. Call the roll. Or no, we don't have to call the roll. Okay, now, we're back in the regular meeting. We do not have any more general public comment cards. So, that brings us where? Brings us where?
There's a special one. Motion has been circulated. The City Attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, Los Angeles Housing Department staff members have confirmed of the presence and the extent of the dangerous conditions in which three additional tenants currently reside at the apartments located at 1023 South Bonnie Bray Street. Immediate action is required to relocate these tenants from extremely dangerous conditions at this building. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Vote on the findings. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Reyes?
Colleagues, I just rise to ask for your support on this very important item. Thank you.
Okay. Let us, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us where on today's agenda?
Mr. President, there's a request for Item 3 to go forth with.
Without objection.
Council has motions for posted and referral.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Just an announcement.
Okay, we'll get there. Consider them posted or referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements? Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I've got four events, folks, I'll be at. If you want to come and see me on Saturday, I'm looking forward to seeing you. The first one is gonna be in Mar Vista, where we have the most incredible garden tour. And it's huge. And I'm gonna be showing up at noon. And the location is 3635 Grandview Boulevard. That's where you all should go. Pick up your map and go around and look at the incredible showcase of greens. It's all about drought-resistant plants. I mean, and it's even, what was so exciting for me is early on, I went and saw one of these water situations that is a way to create food as well. It's called aquaponic farming. It's awesome. And you gotta go see that, folks. It's something that's just dramatic. But all of the gardens are incredible. And then, you see the honeybees and the monarch flies and people doing all that. The second one I will be at is a dedication at 2:00 of the Santoro San Lorenzo Cemetery, the Marquez family cemetery in Santa Monica Canyon at 2:00. We say that and preserve the relatives, historic ancestors, and where they are buried. The third one is the Optimist Club Wine Testing. 3:00. Join me, the Chamber and the Optimist Club. And it's all over there at the Palisadean Lutheran Church at 15905 Sunset. It's an incredible event. And when you're having wine and sipping it, you're helping an incredible group of young people in scholarships and opportunities. And the fourth one, and I dare say not the least one, Frontiers is giving me this award, saying, you know, this and that, and blah, blah, blah. And if you're into that thing, it's at the Abbey at 692 North Robertson Boulevard in West Hollywood at 4:30. So, you can run around with me, if you like. I'd love to see you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I know Ms. Perry was a champion. And this is the Los Angeles Times Book Fair at USC, both Saturday and Sunday. The public is invited all day long. Great events, and the book festival are very important. And then, also, on Sunday, Mr. Weezer, a champion, Sequevia, that started our birthplace, El Pueblo, and goes through the central part of downtown, west on Venice Boulevard, all the way to Mr. Rosenthal's house. He'll serve coffee and donuts and bananas and oranges all day long. I'm just kidding you. Thank you. It's gonna be a great weekend in L.A.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilman. 10:00 a.m., opening day for our green field with Dodger Foundation. I want to thank the Dodgers for their support. This field needed it. It's right down Highland Park off of Figaro Piedmont at 10:00 a.m. You're all welcome. Plaza Morasana opening on 8th and Valencia. It's a plaza honoring Francisco Morasana, a hero in Central American history. It is the first in the nation to have a plaza for the Central Americans to celebrate the culture. We also have, at 3:00, the annual Earth Day Latino State Historic Park event at the cornfields next to Chinatown. And that's at 3:00.
Mr. Zine?
Saturday, the 20th, Autism Speaks at the Rose Bowl. I'll be there to kick that off. Autism Speaks is a major event sponsored by ABC7. Public's invited to come out to the Rose Bowl, and they have a nice walk raising money for autism to try and find a cure. Also, we have a senior symposium tomorrow at One Generation Victory near Resita Boulevard. Public's invited to that event. It's an all-day affair, senior symposium in the great community of Resita. We also have the book signing, an Italian book, cookbook. Joanne Fine is gonna be at Cabaretty's at 22045 Sherway, a great restaurant in the San Fernando Valley. Mama Jolena's Cookbook. And that's gonna be on Saturday from 12:00 to 3:00. It's a great cookbook, great, great Italian food. And Jo, I think we'll have to get a book like that for you. Also, there's the Relay for Life, Woodland Hills at Pierce College, Relay for Life. And that is with the Lymphoma Cancer Society. And I want to wish a happy 50th wedding anniversary to Vic and Sue Sampson. And they're gonna be having the ceremony. And I will be officiating at that ceremony on Saturday. So, that'll be another wonderful occasion. And, thanks for the warning, Ed. Thank you very much, Ed. And for Sunday, there's a 5K that's gonna take place at Pierce College. That's at 8:00 in the morning. And continuation of activities for Sunday, Israeli-American Council celebrates the 65th Independence Day Festival. And that's going to be at 2551 Motor Avenue, a huge turnout celebrating the founding of Israel 65 years ago, Independence Day. Public's invited and willing, and hopefully, will attend. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, any more announcements? Mitch Englander?
Yeah, thank you. I won't read my entire calendar, but Zine took all my time.
No, Mitchell, he read everybody's calendar.
I'm gonna be at half those events, so... And he's officiating the Sampson wedding, 'cause I couldn't make it. But yeah, I'll be there. Anyway, I do have a special announcement that's taking place right now as we speak. The 1212 Reserve Graduation Class is happening right now at the Police Academy. And we have Becca Doten from Richard Alarcon's office, who's graduating today as a Reserve Officer in that graduation.
Congratulations to her.
Yes, absolutely. I would've made the graduation in time, but Zine read his calendar. And then, with that, yes. I would like to also announce that tomorrow night, and the reason I'll be late to the Vic Sampson, Sue Sampson anniversary,[1504.95] reason I'll be late to the Vic Sampson, Sue Sampson anniversary, is we're launching a capital campaign. Everybody's welcome. We've got details in our office for ride-on therapeutic horsemanship. And my co-chair is pretty cool. I don't know if I'm gonna announce it publicly. You could call the office. No, it's Harrison Ford is my co-chair. So the two of us are doing it together. He'd called and asked if I would join him. You don't turn him down. It's Indiana Jones. I mean, he's, so it's a lot of fun. But we'll be launching that tomorrow night.
Okay, if I could have every, oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Carricks.
I just wanted to announce that other than every single thing that Dennis listed, I have a chiropractic appointment on Saturday.
No, Paul, that was a keeper. That was a good one. Any more announcements? Okay, adjourning motions. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few adjourning motions. First, for Bert San Andres, passed away April 6, 2013. Born and raised in the Philippines, he got married and had four wonderful children from his first marriage. He adopted one more and shared his love with all of them. He encouraged them each to aim for higher education, resulting in raising an engineer, an architect, two nurses, and a civilian with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. He himself was part of the hotel industry, a member of the Hotel Workers Union in Los Angeles, from which he retired while in his 60s. And he was a very avid bowler, who never missed an opportunity to shine on the lanes while winning several bowling tournaments and teaching his craft to many. He'll be remembered with every spare and strike. He was 79 years young and leaves behind his best friend of 15 years, his children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, as well as family all over the world. He'll be laid to rest at Hollywood Hills Forest Lawn, right on the other side of his beloved Griffith Park, where he spent several hours running every morning for the last 15 years, rain or shine. Bert San Andres will dearly be missed by all who knew and loved him. Also, I ask that we adjourn in memory of William Gross, who was born October 10, 1921, in Flatbush, Brooklyn, New York, the son of an immigrant tailor from Hungary, who was a charter member of the Amalgamated Clothing Workers Union. After moving to Florida around 1970, he became a school instructor at Dorsey Vocational Skills Center in Liberty City, Florida. His memory will be embedded in the hearts of his friends and many students. He taught the trade of upholstery, a craft that was passed on to him from his father, a tailor. He'll also be remembered with honor as a service to the country as United States Army Air Corps Lieutenant Navigator on a B-24 bomber in World War II. I also ask one last adjourning motion, that in memory of Charles Shuford, who was born in Clarendon, Texas on February 4, 1924, to a wonderful woman and to a medical doctor who died when he was just two months old. His mother raised him in a very poor environment in Dallas, but he earned his Bachelor of Science Engineering and a Master of Science, both from the University of Texas and a JD from Northrop University School of Law in 1982. He spent the majority of his career as an executive for aerospace companies, and he finished his career in the investment business, but he was perhaps most proud of his war service. He valiantly fought in the Battle of Guadalcanal in 1942 during World War II for the U.S. Marine Corps. He was a Special Intelligence Strategy Officer in two wars, and spent a considerable amount of time overseas on missions for the United States. We shared a background in military intelligence and a birthday, February 4. He was fondly remembered as a contrarian thinker with a brilliant mind and a true intellectual who was deeply principled and disciplined. He had a voracious appetite for knowledge, and he took a variety of subjects at El Camino College, always educating himself into his late 70s. He loved nature, the Redondo Beach Pier, attending plays, tennis, and spending time with his children. He's survived by his son, Charles Britton Shuford II, his daughter Carol Anne Shuford, and his granddaughter Uma Shuford Williams, as well as Charles Britton Shuford, who's a friend of mine. As a father, Charles was the most thoughtful, devoted, engaged father imaginable. He served exceptional role model and was always a kind gentleman. Charles and his son spoke nearly every day for 37 years, and I know how much he misses him. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Busquets?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today I ask that we adjourn in memory of the 47 sailors that died in Turret II explosion on this day in 1989. As many of you are aware, the battleship Iowa, now birthed at the Port of Los Angeles as a museum ship, has an illustrious history. The ship and her various crews defended the nation for almost 50 years and served during World War II, Korea, and its reactivation during the Cold War. However, the Iowa has the distinction of almost being home to one of our worst peacetime and loss of life events in U.S. military history. On April 19, 1989, while conducting a firing exercise of the ship's 16-inch gun batteries off the Caribbean Sea, turret II exploded, killing 47 sailors. The quick actions of the crew, including surviving sailors inside the turret, prevented a greater loss of life and saved the ship. This tragic event was commemorated this morning in San Pedro on board the ship. The first memorial event held since the ship was moved to her permanent home in our port. This event, like any other event where military personnel lose their lives, serves as a reminder that freedom indeed is not free. May the Iowa 47 continue to rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, and Mr. Busquets, I know, thank you for that. On Tuesday, Mr. President, as you know in your request, we'll recognize the victims of the industrial tragedy in West Texas, which took place. So we want to remember those people of Texas, including the firefighters who were right there when the explosion took place. Also, this was a victim of crime here in Los Angeles, in the Olympic area. Kellen Christopher Malone, who was 31 years old, came from St. Louis out to Los Angeles to live the great life out here, was waiting for a family member to arrive late, late into the night, was accosted, and was a homicide victim. We ask that you remember him. He loved Los Angeles, as he got started, he was survived by family members, including his mother. Kellen Malone.
Mr. Garcetti, did you want to speak to Mr. Busquets' adjourning motion?
No, I would thank him for doing that. I just wanted to add from earlier in the week, if I could be attached to Mr. Sal Castro's adjourning motion, who is a dear friend, a dear mentor, and somebody who influenced my life greatly and is greatly missed.
Okay.
His funeral announcements are being, I believe it's on 26, on Thursday next week, right here at the cathedral, so I want to check on that for your schedules. Thank you. God bless him.
Okay, no more adjourning motions. This meeting is adjourned.